Recording in progress.
It is 6:11 PM and we're calling to order the special and regular meeting of the City Council. And I will read the land acknowledgement. Well, wait, I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowles here. Councilmember Big Stick.
Present.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
I am present now. Thank you all for your patience.
Mayor Vodderlaus.
Here. I will read the land acknowledgement. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatouxaloni people, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatouxaloni people for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth as the indigenous protectors of this land. And in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatouxaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as caretakers of this place, as well as for all people who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first people and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatouxaloni people. And, you know what? Wait a minute. Sorry. There will be no clapping tonight at all. If you want to agree with the speaker in front of you, wave your hand above your head. But there will be no clapping. And if there is clapping, then we will take a break. So please adhere to our request. Thank you. And I'm going to lead the pledge.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two proclamations first. And the first one is Fire Prevention Week 2024. And this is a proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition of Fire Prevention Week, October 6th through 11th, 2024. Whereas the City of Pacifica and North Coast, I'm sorry, North County Fire Authority are committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Pacifica. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. And whereas, to the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, at home, the place people feel the safest from fire, is where they're at the greatest risk. An NFPA data shows that the majority of U.S. home fire deaths continue to occur in homes with no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms. Whereas having working smoke alarms in the home reduces the risk of dying in a home fire by more than half, actually 54%, and more than one-third, 38% of home fire deaths result in fires in which no smoke alarms are present. And whereas, smoke alarms should be in every bedroom outside each separate sleeping area, on each level, including basements, attics, and meet the needs of all family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. Whereas testing smoke alarms should be conducted once a month by pushing the test button and replacing smoke alarms when they're 10 years old or do not respond when tested. And whereas, North County Fire Authority first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, City of Pacifica residents are responsive to public education measures and can take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, reinforces the importance of keeping working smoke alarms within the home. Now therefore, I sue Vodderlaus on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all of the citizens, do hereby proclaim, October 6th to 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, I urge all people of Pacifica to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and support the many public safety activities and efforts of the North County Fire Authority and emergency services during Fire Prevention Week 2024, done this 23rd day of September, 2024. And is someone here from fire?
Yeah.
Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for presenting us with this proclamation. So thank you on behalf of North County Fire Authority. I think you said it beautifully. You had a lot of great information in there. I just wanted to reiterate that the theme for this year's Fire Prevention Week is Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You. So that's not just having them installed, that's making sure you're testing them every month, that's making sure you're replacing them when they don't work anymore. And again, just thank you on behalf of North County Fire Authority. Did you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or statements from council? Okay.
It was a good opportunity to remind folks about SMC alerts. And I know it used to be Zone Haven and then it switched to Genesis.
Yep.
But frankly, I don't remember the spelling of Genesis that allows me to bring up the app. So if you could tell us just for a moment about SMC alerts and that formerly known as Zone Haven, so that we all know how to keep ourselves protected and coordinate in event of the, hopefully not.
Sure. So Zone Haven is now Genesis Protect, which is spelt oddly. It's like G-E-N.
Y.
Y-S-A-S. You can go to northcountyfireauthority.org and it has a link that will take you directly to it. It'll say zonehaven/genesisprotect, so that you can look up your address. And if you want, you can sign up and you can get alerts for evacuation. And so that's what that is for. You can also go to NFPA's website. So that's the National Fire Protection Association. I forgot to say this earlier, but they have a lot of more information about Fire Prevention Week, and they've got lots of activities and resources for all ages. So kids, adults, and even the elderly as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all that you do and all of your colleagues. I wanted to check and see if you can tell us the date and times of Fire Awareness Day. I think coming up in early October.
Perfect. Thank you for the reminder. So we're calling it Fire Service Day. So that's our open house. You can stop by the fire station in Pacifica, Daly City, and Brisbane. And we'll have activities. You'll be able to talk to the firefighters, just learn more. And so that's going to be on October 5th, Saturday, from 10 to 2. So that's right before Fire Prevention Week.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I wanted to just say that I feel like we've been really lucky the last few years. We've been able to cultivate relationships with our firemen and our fire, our fire people, our firefighters. Yeah, and it's really good for us to understand, you know, all that goes on and all the different, everywhere. So thank you so much. Yeah.
I appreciate that you're focusing on smoke detectors. And I just thought I'd share a personal story. So I was pregnant with my son. My daughter was about three. We had both gone to bed early. My husband was out at a meeting. It was a really hot day. We left the windows open and a light on. It happened to be a halogen light near the window. And the wind blew the curtains over the light and, just like that, started a fire in our living room that quickly spread smoke. And anyway, yes, the early warning and the smoke detectors, I mean, 54%, as you say, but as a personal story, it really makes a difference. So check your batteries.
Yes, check your batteries. And just a reminder that fires happen a lot quicker now. So that early warning is really important. So flashover where, you know, everything in the room, smokes spilled the room, everything in the room is now on fire. It can happen within three minutes now. So that early warning, again, when you're sleeping, gets you the time to get out of the house safely.
And you're done?
Yeah.
Yeah. I would like to thank the fire department for everything they've done for me. This. And they came very quickly. And it was really a wonderful experience. Not, but anyway. And I want to tell people that the 10-year smoke detectors, we're finding them failing after two, three, four years. So don't rely on the fact that you have a 10-year smoke detector, because they're not working. So.
If I may add, remember that, so it's 10-year battery, but that doesn't necessarily mean, that's the manufacturer date. So it could still be on the shelf being sold not right when it was, not right when it was made.
Right.
You can check, check the date. And that's why you have to test as well. So make sure you're.
Definitely test.
Exactly. Thank you. Good point.
Thank you. Okay. Want to go up and take a picture?
I do.
Do you want a picture?
Sure.
Okay, let's go. Family Fun Festival 40th Anniversary. Whereas healthy, positive play opportunities are essential for the physical and mental health of individuals, families, and the community of Pacifica. And whereas in the 1970s, I'm sorry, the New Games Foundation began a major nationwide play festival and leadership training program. And whereas in 1981, Dr. Bill Michaelis, City of Pacifica resident and San Francisco State University professor, helped establish the first new games festival in Pacifica at Cabrillo Elementary Alternative Class. And whereas in 1983, John O'Connell, Director of the New Games Foundation, Bill Michaelis, the Pacifica School District, Parks, Beach, and Recreation Department, Park, Beach, and Recreation Commissioner, Don Beck, and a group of local citizens led by the Youth Service Bureau, helped establish the first Pacifica New Games Family Fun Festival as a healthy, proactive family fun event. And whereas in 1986, the Family Fun Festival was integrated into the newly formed Pacific Coast Fog Fest. Everybody's going this weekend, right? And make marking this year as their 40th anniversary. And whereas the Fun Fest has been a staple of the PBNR department, every year, hundreds of families from toddlers to grandparents attend and take part in a wide variety of win-win games. And activities including giant earth ball, parachute, inflatables, trike races, cardboard city, active games, paint a car, big bubbles, and face painting, all led by fully trained staff and community volunteers, like the Pacifica Libraries, the Pacifica School District, Miller and O'Brien, ah, I'm sorry, the grateful collaboration of the community businesses and nonprofit organizations, like the Pacifica Libraries, the Pacifica School District, Miller, O'Brien Towing and Repair, SFSU, Pacifica Boy Scouts, and Fog Fest, as well as with the enthusiastic professional support by current PBNR staff members, Scott Leslie, Lexi Macario, and Anthony Schreiber. And whereas, we thank everyone for making this quality Pacifica community building event happen over the years and invite everyone to come by Sunday, September 29th, at Ingridby Lacy Middle School, to celebrate the 40th anniversary. Our theme will be Be Kind and Be Playful. Now therefore, I sue Vodderlaus on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all of you citizens, do hereby celebrate and recognize the 40th anniversary of the Pacifica Family Fun Festival, done this 23rd day of September, 2024. And I did see Scott, so, or, and Anthony, I think.
Yeah.
And Bill.
And Bill.
All right.
I'm clapping.
Oh, yeah.
I am too.
See you too.
Oh.
We're very excited. This is the fourth annual Family Fun Fest. We invite everyone to attend as part of the Fog Fest. And it's a free, fun, exciting event that now spans several generations.
And I'd like to, there's a lot of people over 40 years that we're not going to name them all. But I'd like, there's a lot of people involved right from the, from the get-go. And I want to thank all of them. They know who they are. We've lost a few along the way. Dear Don Beck, our PBNR commissioner, and a number of other folks. But the spirit continues. Don Beck's there, will be, his spirit will be there on Sunday. And just want to reiterate the invitation for people to come. We have a lot of new citizens here in town. And what's been great to see a lot of the new folks come and they're bringing the littler ones and the whole new generations, which is really absolutely terrific. And the last thing is, with all the many serious things that you are dealing with, is that the understatement for tonight? Yes, hello? Just let us continue to reaffirm the importance of family, play, kindness. Everybody's super busy. So making that time for the ones that we love. And so we're really, really honored to be able to be here still. And we hope we carry on. And we couldn't have done it without the PBNR wonderful staff, Lexi Macario and Anthony Schreiber, and of course, Scott Leslie, and several other people that are going to be there as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Oh, perfect.
That's a risky.
That's, okay, council? Council? Maybe I'll start with Christine.
Go ahead. I wanted to know what the age limit was to participate.
No limit.
No limit? Okay. Thank you. And you're absolutely right, Bill. We need some fun right now. And I think we do as a whole city and community, the hard things we've been going through. I really appreciate all the work you do to make this happen. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo that. Thank you for reminding us to have fun. And Bill, you are always doing that. You're like, you carry that with you everywhere you go. And I really appreciate that so much. It was really nice to hear Mr. Beck's name. Having heard his name for a long time is a big part of my childhood. And so it's really beautiful to see it all come together, continue to come together and grow, right? Because we have all those folks from San Francisco State, and it's just, it's a really great collaboration. So thank you.
I'm looking forward to Sunday. It's going to be fun and I can't wait. Thank you for starting this 40 years ago. And thank you to all the staff who've maintained it and all the volunteers over these years. See you Sunday.
This is an event that has literally spanned the entirety of my life.
Oh.
And so, you know, it informs the time before memories, when memories weren't quite memories, and then turned into memories. And has been foundational, I'm guessing not just for myself, but. just for myself, but for many Pacificans. So thank you.
And my oldest is 43. And I remember her smashing a car, which was one of the old events, but that's the one I remember the most and parachutes. And my kids had such a great time in that, in the Family Fun Fest. And thank you so much. And we will come up and take a picture.
And we got there to smash a car.
these proclamations? Seeing none, is there anyone on the phone? And no one on the phone? I'll bring it back to council.
There's one for, never mind.
Okay.
I, I think there's one person on the phone.
Okay, go ahead.
It is for Gloria Stefan.
Okay.
Just a real quick, proud to be a Pacifican who helped with Bill and quite a few other people start the Family Fun Festival. And that it's been going on for all these years. I didn't realize it was 40 years. Wow. Anyway, thank you to the City of Pacifica for letting us provide this type of activity. Actually, it was a play for all or new games, whatever. It was that period of time. And I just want to thank the rec department and the city for letting us do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
There are no other raised hands.
Thank you. Now I'll bring it back to council. The first item that we have is the consent calendar. So does anyone want to remove or add anything on the consent calendar? Seeing no one here, is anyone in the audience wish to speak on anything on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, we will close that and bring it back to council. Persons wishing to address the council on any, oh, sorry, we're done with that one. Public meetings are a limited public forum, meaning that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Comments must relate to the specific item on the agenda and nothing other than that. So because this is such a large group of people, I've already asked.
Madam Mayor.
Sorry.
So questions regarding consent and a motion.
Oh, we have to vote on the consent calendar. Sorry, this is, what is, was there a motion in a second? Motion, please.
I'll move to approve consent.
Second.
Please vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with the motion to adopt the consent calendar made by Councilmember Big Stick and seconded by Councilmember Beer, the vote passes unanimously.
Through the mayor.
And can, yes.
Can, can I request that we do our council communications at the end?
Yes, I was, that was the next thing. Council communications will not be at the beginning of the meeting. Does staff have anything, staff communications that they feel the public should know about ahead?
Public comments.
I do have one communication I want to provide of interest to the public, but question whether you want to do public comments, not on the agendized items before that.
Yes.
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 Are there any public comments? I don't have any cards. And that's why I've just, I see so many people, I just wanted to skip ahead and get started. But I don't, is there anyone on the phone? Thank you. So I'll bring it back to council and then I'll go to staff communications? Or do we have to vote to change the order to put, okay, thanks, we won't. Okay, staff communications, nothing?
Yeah, just very quickly, thank you Mayor Vardalas, Mayor Protam Beckmeyer, and City Councilmember Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I just wanted to take the opportunity to comment that this week is nationwide standing against hate week. And as everyone can see of the posters that we have in front on the dais, that the City of Pacifica embraces the United Against Hate efforts and the United Against Hate Week. And we've also in recent years developed the Pacifica Stands United in Love, more proactive affirmative statement. And just to mention with everyone that's here and everyone that's watching, we take that commitment seriously. And to say that these posters are available at City Hall, if anybody from the community would like to stop by, pick one up, display at their residence or their place of business. And of course, it doesn't just apply to this week, it applies to every, every week and every day. So they are, we have a, a bunch printed up and anybody can stop by and grab some if they wish. That's all I wanted to communicate. Thank you.
Thank you. And we did get a card for public comments. So we're going to go back to public comment for this one card. Ron Makel.
Yeah, hello, Ron Makel. Hello, council and mayor and staff and everybody. I just appeared to express my appreciation. This is kind of late, okay? It's the first time I've been to a council meeting in this chamber since it was remodeled, you know? I've been to some planning commission meetings and I've, actually, I remember I had, I brought this up to the manager one time and several of you council people and, and I, I expressed how amazed I was at how beautiful, what a wonderful job is done with, with this place. I've came up here for so many years. I've lived in Pacifica forever and came up here and, you know, you had these funky old red, orange rug and chairs that were falling apart. And I mean, it's like, I usually refer to like an old Zim's Restaurant, kind of like that. Anyway, that's another story. But, you know, I'm really appreciative and I just wanted to express my appreciation because I was told by council people and the city managers that if I had to point the finger at anybody, it was Mary, Mary Beer. So she was the main person. So then with that being said, and thank you, I also want to thank this, you and, and the city staff and everybody for what, you know, remodeling our planning department building, recreation building, city hall. I mean, I have not been inside yet, but just driving around, it's really, really wonderful to see that. That's something that's been a problem for so many years. We finally got it done. You got it done. And the city manager got it done. And also now we're repaving the roads. So, and that's really a real pleasure. I live on Rockway. The last time that road was paved was back in 1982, over 40 years ago. So anyways, I, I just want to express my appreciation that you guys are moving the city in a good direction in regards to the infrastructure and stuff. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay, now I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council. And now I'm going to move on.
Okay.
Okay. This, first of all, I want to note that this is an appeal hearing and the appellant's and member of, of the public will have the opportunity to speak. This item will start with the city staff presenting a staff report and councils may, may ask questions of staff. I will then open the public hearing. Each appellant will be given an opportunity to, to present and the council will have an opportunity to ask questions. Following council questions, members of the public will be allowed to speak for two minutes. I was advised one and a half, but I'm going to give you two. In order to allow everyone to speak, we will closely monitor the time and ask speakers to wrap it up at the end of the two-minute time period. If you wish to speak, fill out a card, provide it up to the front. We understand that people have strong feelings. We want everyone to be able to speak on both sides and make this fair for everyone. Please don't berate anyone. Please, again, don't clap. You, we're doing great with the hand wiggles and we can see it. So we really appreciate it. And we want this to move forward smoothly. No, no booing either. And express your opinion when you come to the podium. If 10 people have gotten up or two people have gotten up before you and said exactly what you want to say, in the, in the ease of time, you can just say, I agree with the person prior to me. And that really helps us out too. It speeds along the time. So I would appreciate that also. Okay. And this item is consideration of a resolution denying the appeal of Dan Stejink and upholding the appeal of Bayland Soil Pacifica LLC of the Planning Commissioners effective denial of various actions to approve the Rockaway Quarry Reclamation Plan, certifying the final EIR, Environmental Impact Report, and adopting findings of fact, and a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program for the quarry reclamation plan. Do you want me to read the entire thing? Or that's good?
That's good.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have the staff report. I'm sorry, before the staff report, has anybody had any communications, ex parte communications?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. I'll start with Christine again.
I've spoken to the property owner, Paul Healy, and numerous members of the public.
I've spoken to members of the public.
Okay.
Is, I, I have too, spoken to members of the public. But I want to double check on if, speaking to members of the public is ex parte?
Yes, you would, you would just identify that. I had, I had conversations with members of the public. I, and if you had conversations with the project applicant, you would mention that. And then you, you just generally, you don't need to talk specifically about what you specifically said, just that you had conversations.
Conversations with members of the public.
And members of the public who were opposed to the project and members of the public who were in support of the project.
Yes. Many members of the public who are opposed and not as many who were in favor.
Tiger.
I've spoken to Paul Yuli, I've spoken to Matt Larson, members of the trade union, the Department of DMR, Division of Mining Reclamation, and many, many members of the public over the course of last year and a half or so.
And I spoke to Matt Larson and many members of the public also. Okay, now we'll ask for the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and esteemed members of the City Council. I'm Kabita Kumar, the interim Community Development Director for the city. I have with me today staff, right next to me is Stephanie Cervantes, the Acting Deputy Director of our department. I have Roland Yip, Deputy Director of Public Works, Rod Stinton from Rainy and Associates, who is our EIR consultant for this project. We also have Jill Barnes from CSG, who's the Consulting City Civil Engineer. We have Brooks Ramsdale from the EIR team to answer any questions on the geotechnical aspects on the phone. And after the staff report, we will all be present here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just say that we, we also have our planning commissioners, the liaisons are here tonight, just so you know?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Our two, we have two planning commission liaisons today, Samantha Hauser and Greg White.
The subject of this hearing today is twofold. The first I fold, the first aspect of it is the appeals to the Planning Commission effective denial for, on a hearing that was held on August 19th. There are two appeals that were filed during the appeal period by Mr. Dan Stejink and the Bayland Soil Pacifica, who is the applicant for this proposal. And the second aspect of this hearing is a de novo consideration of the proposed reclamation plan, which will be referred to as the reduced fill alternative throughout this presentation and while we answer questions. Part of that de novo consideration will include certifying the final EIR, adopting the findings of fact and mitigation monitoring report for the reclamation plan, approving the specific plan, the quarry use permit, variance and tree permit that were associated with the reclamation plan proposal, and approving the rezoning and the development plan to implement the reclamation plan. Just want to go over the site designations. There are a lot of acronyms and just want to make sure everybody understands some of these acronyms we are going to be using throughout the presentation. The site is currently designated as a, in the general plan for, partially for visitor-serving commercial and partially for conservation. The current zoning is all that, those letters that you see, but what that actually means is, the current zoning is service commercial with a coastal zone combining district as required in the hillside preservation district overlay standards. So the reclamation plan proposal will need to be rezoned to the, a planned development within the coastal zone combining district under the hillside preservation district overlay standards. This is a map that shows the existing conditions on the quarry parcel, just to orient everyone and for people who may not be familiar with this site. As you can see, there are references to the hilltop, the east flank, the quarry face, the southern bluff towards the ocean, and the quarry pit, which again, we will be referencing throughout our presentation The project site is made up of two parcels, the quarry parcel, which is 47 acres, and the eastern parcel, which is 39 acres closer to Route One, for a total of 86 acres. In terms of project description, the current application under consideration, as I mentioned, is a revised, a reduced fill alternative. But the application that was processed by the city and the EIR is based on an application that was, which, which we will go into more detail. But the current application is a revised quarry reclamation plan, which was submitted in October 2023 to reclaim, reclaim the former quarry by importing 874,000 cubic yards of soil, establishing new seasonal wetlands, establishing new California Red-legged Frog Pond, constructing new unpaved recreational trails, and constructing new drainage improvements. There is no change in use proposed, nor are there any buildings proposed to be constructed. And the current iteration of the reclamation plan we are reviewing, we are up for consideration is known as the reduced fill alternative, which was proposed by the applicant in, in July of this year in response to comments received by the Planning Commission. in response to comments received by the Planning Commission and by the public in several hearings, which we will go into more detail in a little bit. This current iteration or alternative is, reduces the imported fill to 583 cubic yards from 874,000 cubic yards and will be reclaimed in a phased grading over four years. Just to provide an introduction, again, we will be talking about a lot of different regulations and acronyms, so this will help just set the stage and explain some of these requirements. The statutory requirements for reclamation include the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act, known as SMARA, which imposes reclamation obligations on quarry owners, and they are required to reclaim the unreclaimed quarries. The city also has SMARA requirements within the municipal code that is, that references, that uses SMARA as a reference. Additionally, the State Department of Conservation, Division of Mines and Reclamation, has advisory authority to review reclamation plans, and we will go into more detail on some of the review that DMR has processed on this application. And finally, the State Mining and Geology Board, SMGB, has oversight over reclamation plans, plan appeals, and any city actions. To provide a little more of a background, you will see that the staff report goes into this in more detail. The DMR reviewed a prior plan, which was, which proposed a fill of eight, sorry, 970,000 cubic yards, which is also referenced to in our presentation as the October 2023 plan. And that, for reclaiming the site, and this was determined consistent with SMARA by the Department of Mine and Reclamation. Our presentation goes in, our staff report talks about the repercussions of not acting timely or denying the reclamation plan, which can be appealed to SMGB. Given that a prior version of this reclamation plan has been effectively approved, an appeal could result in an increased fill than the reduced fill alternative that is currently under consideration. I would like to go into the general plan consistency of the reduced fill alternative. This can be found on your packet page 211, if anybody wants to follow along. The general plan identifies the quarry site, the Rockaway Quarry property, as the most prominent potential development site for promoting tourism and economic development in Pacifica by extending the visitor-oriented environment and pursuing uses such as destination hotels and inns on the developable portion of this site. Given that, the general plan policies recommends preparation of a specific plan for the quarry site to enable responsible development and environmental conservation. The first step for this to happen would, is to require the completion of a reclamation pursuant to the SMARA requirements. The current applicant's proposal promotes this general plan's vision and direction for the Rockaway Quarry site. This map shows the general plan land use designations. The two red arrows show where the conservation and the visitor-serving commercial areas are located. With that, I will pass it along to Stephanie Cervantes to go through the history of the reclamation plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayors, council members. My name is Stephanie Cervantes, acting deputy director. I will be going through a really brief history of past reclamation plans on this site that were mentioned in the staff report. So, starting with the 1996, 1998 plans, which were considered no-fill plans. Those plans took existing land, mass land formations on the quarry sites to grade and to fill the portions of the quarry pit. That is why they were considered no-fill. They were no import projects. There was still fill, there's still grading that would be occurring on the site. The, in 2016, the same property owner as we have today proposed a reclamation plan that would require 600 cubic yards of imported fill. The 2016 plan included proposed development on that site, which was turned down by the voters of Pacifica. Due to the failure of the voter initiative, the focus was changed to reclamation only to comply with SMARA requirements. I will go through, really briefly again, all the previous planning commission hearings that we have had on the different versions of this application. So between, between 2016 and 2023, the city reviewed reclamation plans and conducted environmental review on the proposed project. In June of 2023, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the version of the plan that we'll call the April 2023 plan. This version of the plan included almost 1 million cubic yards of imported fill. The plan included reclamation of all mine lands, elimination of the eroded and unvegetated mine lands, elimination of slopes steeper than 2:1, and removal of eroded slopes adjacent to trails for safety. It also included preservation of the southern bluff at its current elevation while imported fill, while importing fill to establish a natural uplands area and filling the quarry pit. At the hearing, the public and the commission raised a number of issues, including the number of truck trips and traffic, soil, water testing, facing, and fill alternatives. The applicant worked to address the comments and submitted a revised reclamation plan in October of 2023. The October 2023 plant, the October 2023 version of the reclamation plan was presented to the Planning Commission on March 18 of 2024. The plan reduced the imported fill to 874,000 cubic yards. The plan proposed a reduction in grading and imported fill over the previous plan. There was also preservation of the southern bluff at its current elevation while bringing in less imported fill to establish a natural uplands area and filling of the quarry pit, provision of ADA accessible paths connecting the multi-use trail across the northwesternly overlooked point of the bluffs, and a reduction in average haul truck trips per day. The plan also included exclusion of soil sources sites in Santa Clara County for imported fill, expansion of soil screening, water quality testing to ensure that Calera Creek is not affected by imported soils, an updated dust control plan, and an adaptive management plan involving a commitment from the applicant to meet with city staff. Here is an exhibit which was included in your packet for tonight's packet page 203, which demonstrates, which shows the 874,000 cubic yard version of the plan. The 20, the October 2023 reclamation plan also addressed the comments and concerns that were raised during the June 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Those included extensive amount of project material to review, that was reviewed in a short period of time, the quantity of foreign or imported soil proposed for the project impacts of imported or foreign soil, the number of truck trips and accommodations of seasonal variations, including winter and rains with respect to truck trips, and grading management to account for traffic and stormwater impacts, addressed overall traffic impacts, impacts to soil vegetation and marine habitats, tribal cultural resource impacts, and public health and environmental impacts. The March 2018, I'm sorry, the March 18, 2024 meeting was continued. The applicant requested a study session instead of another hearing. The study session was scheduled for May 20 of 2024. During the study session, a reduced fill alternative was presented to address concerns raised. The issues, questions, and concerns raised that were discussed included the possibility for further reduction in imported fill to less amount than proposed and/or maximizing native fill and/or zero import foreign fill options, the origin of truck trips and traffic safety given the terrain off-site and other traffic concerns, reclamation facing in correspondence with specific plan process, the SMARA requirements in process, rigorous soil testing and analysis of imported fill, tribal cultural resource impacts, and potential water quality impacts due to erosion and stormwater runoff. The reduced fill alternative further lowered the amount of imported fill to 583,000 cubic yards to establish natural upland areas adjacent to the creek and filling the quarry pit while preserving the southern bluff at its current elevation. This is an exhibit included on packet page 203, comparing the 970,000 and the 874,000 plans. This is an exhibit included on packet page 207, which compares the 874,000 cubic yard plan and the 583,000 cubic yard plan. I will now turn it back to Ms. Kumar.
Thank you, Stephanie. So on August 19, 2024, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the project that is under consideration today for the proposed reduced fill alternative. The Planning Commission voted 0, 5, 2, which is zero people saying yes, five saying nay, and two abstain or absent on a motion to certify the EIR and adopt the mitigation monitoring report, recommend approval of the rezoning and development plan to the City Council, and approve the package of permits, including the quarry use permit, specific plan, variance, and tree permit all required for the reclamation to continue, thereby rendering an effective denial of the project. Since then, two appeals have been filed, filed on the Planning Commission's action. One appeal, the first appeal was filed by Mr. Dan Stejink with four bases for appeal. And then we have a second appeal also submitted by the applicant, the Balan Soil Pacifica, with seven bases for appeal. And I will go through them briefly. So the first appeal, the staff analyzed the bases included in the appeal and found that there were no grounds for the appeal and recommends that the City Council deny this appeal. And for appeal number two, for, by Balan Soil Pacifica, staff again analyzed the bases for these appeals and found that bases one through six had no grounds as explained in the staff report on packet page 224. And the basis number seven, the City Council is required to hold, is holding a de novo hearing for the project, which, which is the grounds for basis number seven. So staff has reviewed all the comments we've received and the several hearings on this project and has taken into consideration all the issues, the project issues that have been raised. And as Stephanie went through, some of the issues that were raised over and over again included the cultural and tribal, cultural and tribal cultural resources, water quality, soil testing, the amount of imported fill and, imported fill and the management of the grading and traffic that was going to be coming through the city. So the staff has worked with the consultants to propose new and revised conditions to resolve and mitigate for many of the issues concerning the approval of the reclamation plan. These conditions address, create a phased and slower pace of grading while concurrently working on a specific plan and limiting the amount of grading to no more than what is necessary by the, by the general plan. The conditions require detailed plans to be reviewed by the city as the project progresses, including traffic management plans, soil management, and grading plans. In order to ensure that the public, the Planning Commission, and the City Council continue to be kept informed on the project's progress, a new condition also has been included for annual reporting requirements. These conditions of approval are listed in the staff report, and I will go through some of them in more detail. Condition number nine is the phased reclamation plan. According to this, the project would be phased in three, a minimum of three phases. In phase one, the, the project will incorporate no more than 100,000 cubic yards of imported fill in the first two years from the commencement of the reclamation plan upon issuance of all required ministerial and discretionary approvals from state and federal agencies. And these permits, these necessary approvals are listed in, under B of that condition, and they include the coastal development permit from the California Coastal Commission, a Clean Water Act Section 404 permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the Section 7 biological opinion by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, a Clean Water Act Section 401 water quality certification or waiver from the San Francisco Regional Water Quality Control Board, and finally, a SMARA compliance review from the California Department of Conservation, Division of Mine Reclamation. Going back to phase, after that, after all these necessary approvals have been issued and obtained, the reclamation, the grading would commence. And in phase one, there would be limited to 100,000 cubic yards of imported fill in the first two years. In phase two, following phase one, any additional reclamation shall be subject to, subject to contingent upon a city-initiated and community-led draft specific plan. In the event that the specific plan has been prepared, the applicant shall submit a phase-two grading plan for a maximum amount of imported fill based on the amount necessary for development that is consistent with the proposed specific plan. In the event that a specific plan has not been prepared in that time period, the applicant may submit a phase-two grading and management plan for no more than an additional 100,000 cubic yards of imported fill. Under phase three, if no specific plan has been prepared and distributed within the first four years from the commencement of phase one, the applicant may submit a phase-three grading and management plan for the maximum imported fill of 583,000 cubic yards or such lower amount as would be necessary to develop land uses on the project site in accordance with the applicable general plan land use designations. Prior to issuance of any grading permit for continued reclamation at the face, at the project site, the applicant shall submit the grading and management plans for each phase. Staff has also added other conditions of approval to address some of the issues that were, that I just mentioned. Condition number 10, talk, is, oh, the condition number 10 specifies that the property owner shall fund all city costs for the specific plan, the preparation of the specific plan, and his obligation shall be documented in a reimbursement agreement and monitored. Condition number 11 is to address the traffic, traffic concerns that have been, that have been brought up at all the hearings. A traffic management plan would include performance standards for monitoring and implementing, in conjunction with the grading plan, the review and approval by Public Works and the city departments. The applicant shall be responsible for all peer review consultation costs incurred by the city. the city to complete these reviews. Condition number 12 is to address the soil testing issues and questions that have been raised. The applicant shall seek the review and approval of a proposed soil management plan from the Department of Toxic Substances and Substances Control for imported fill screening and provide evidence that the DTSE approval has been obtained. The soil sampling interval shall be no less than every other truck trip, truck importing the fill for the reclamation and grading for the approved project plans. Condition number 13 addresses the civil plans themselves because, as we know, the reduced fill alternative that we are reviewing right now does not have a complete set of final grading plans, and this condition of approval addresses that. Prior to issuance of a grading permit for each phase, the applicant shall submit a compiled set of detailed civil plans that shall at a minimum include the grading plan for each phase, stormwater management plan, erosion control plan, existing and proposed site sections, and all necessary details. The grading permit submittal for each phase shall also include all applicable documents per current industry standards and technical guidance, including but not limited to stormwater pollution prevention plan, water quality sample plan, fungi testing requirements, dust mitigation plan, an adaptive mitigation plan, and soil management plan to be submitted to the Community Development Department and be subject to peer review prior to acceptance and approval by the city. A new condition number 14 has been included, and this addresses the revegetation in the reclamation plan and the tree replacement plantings that is required in the mitigation monitoring report under the SEQA. The applicant shall provide written evidence to the Community Development Department's satisfaction that the project geotechnical engineer confirms that the tree replanting species and locations are appropriate and will ensure slope stability. There is also conditions added per the comments we've received to limit truck trips during the Valamar School drop-off hours of not less than 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. on days when schools are in session. And this would be part of the traffic management plan for each phase of reclamation activities. Condition number seven is that no soil, no imported soil shall be sourced from Santa Clara County as proposed in the revised reclamation plan. And condition number nine is an operations and maintenance agreement.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
What did I say?
Prior.
Condition number 18, sorry about that. Prior to the issuance of the grading of each phase and/or any permits, the applicant shall enter into a post-reclamation operations and maintenance agreement with the city for ongoing maintenance of storm drain systems, including but not limited to maintenance of the sediment junction structures. The ONM agreement shall be recorded on the project site and bind the current and future property owners for the maintenance obligations contained in this agreement. And finally, a condition of approval, as I referred to earlier, for an annual report has been added, and an annual report shall be prepared by the city each year that summarizes the following. Progress of the reclamation plan over the preceding year beginning January 1 and ending December 31. Any upcoming reclamation activities. All grading and development activities conducted in the reporting period on the property and compliance with all conditions of approval imposed on this project as proposed and as amended. In preparation of this annual report, the city may retain independent consultants to assist in the data gathering, analysis, and report preparation. The applicant shall provide all required information requested by the city, including but not limited to truck traffic, data on truck traffic, soil management, biologic surveys to monitor compliance of these conditions of approval that is needed for the preparation of an annual report. The applicant shall fund all aspects of the report preparation, including but not limited reimbursement for staff time, including city attorney time, consultant fees, and direct cost, costs associated with the report production and distribution. And finally, the annual report shall be prepared and presented to the Planning Commission at a regularly scheduled public meeting in March of each year for their acceptance. In summary, in light of the above, the staff recommends that the state-mandated reclamation plan be approved with the amended and added conditions to require the reclamation to be conducted in a phased manner with limited fill while the city concurrently undertakes the city-initiated and community-led specific planning process at the applicant's expense. Staff has determined that this phased and adaptive approach to the reclamation plan ensures that the city retains control of the reclamation, can adapt based on rigorous monitoring and reporting, has the flexibility over the city's future, site's future use, and can reclaim the property in an environmentally responsible manner. The staff report includes the recommended actions on page, do we know? On packet page 218, the first action is to deny the appeal by Dan Stejink and to uphold the appeal by Balin Soil Pacifica. The second action would be to certify the final EIR and adopt the findings of fact and the MMRP for the quarry reclamation plan. And finally, approve, and the next action would be to approve the specific plan to implement the development plan, the quarry use permit variance to allow reclamation in the Hillside Preservation District, and the tree permit to remove 25 trees and replace them with 114 trees with conditions of approval. Following that would be the recommendation to approve the zoning from C3X to PDX as described above, and finally, to approve the development plan to assign the site-specific zoning for a quarry reclamation plan to reclaim the former quarry, including construction of public access trails, drainage infrastructure, wetland mitigation on the two undeveloped parcel totaling 86 acres as shown in the previous slides. In conclusion, staff would like to state that a community-led specific planning process with the approval of the project ensures that the community-driven future for Rockaway Quarry through a city-initiated specific plan. This process would be fully funded by the project applicant, and this plan allows residents and stakeholders to directly influence the site's long-term use. The process guarantees inclusive, thoughtful development that addresses local needs, values, and environmental priorities. With this, we can shape the future together. The approval secures the financial commitment needed to start the specific plan guiding the future development like ecotourism, trails and open spaces, visitor-serving commercial areas consistent with the general plan, and this participatory process ensures Pacifica's residents have a voice in the site's future, reflecting public interest while preserving the environmental character. With that, staff concludes their presentation, and our entire team is here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions from council? I'm going to start on that.
Yeah, please.
Is that me?
Yes, that's you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, staff. I think everyone deserves thank yous all around. I've watched every second of the Planning Commission hearings. I've seen the ridiculous amount of work staff has put into this, and I have noticed the community coming out in droves at every occasion. There is no shortage of care that has been put into all of these considerations, and now we get to enjoy everybody's company in processing this as well. So bear with us, one more long night to go. I want to start with basics. There were some emails that came in implying that somehow council has had a choice at any step in this process in terms of whether or not we process the application, whether or not we hear the appeals. I appreciate that for any given community member, maybe they haven't participated as robustly and aren't as familiar with various city processes. So it's a two-parter. One, are we able to summarily deny hearing an application because we want to just deny hearing an application? And again, I'm trying to just set some basics for those who maybe don't follow protocols as much as others.
We have both state-mandated and locally mandated in our municipal code requirements for appeals of Planning Commission decisions, so that there are due process rights that the applicant is afforded.
Due process rights.
Due process rights that the applicant has, that we are required to follow the procedures that we have in municipal code to assure that the applicant's due process rights are met. And in conjunction with those rights, they have the right to be heard in front of the appeal body, which in this case would be the council, in order to, what the legal term is, to exhaust their administrative remedies, because they cannot go straight from a Planning Commission denial without going through the council to get a final determination. So there is no final determination on this project at this time until the council acts on it.
So I think what I just heard were a bunch of rules and laws were put into place by people, not us, saying that these applications have to be addressed and that we have to hear the appeal when it comes our way.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to establish a baseline for why we're here tonight and make sure if anybody had any doubt, it wasn't specifically because council chose to spend this way on a Monday evening. I'm good for now.
Christine.
Yeah, can you just tell us what the process is for tonight? So I'm a little confused. We're going to hear the appeals and we're going to review the project. Do we, are we going to be ruling on the appeals first and then going on to the project in detail? And there might be some related questions, like I know there are some questions related to the EIR.
So I can probably address that question. And the process is, at this point, it's the opportunity for the council to ask questions of staff, and then at the conclusion of those, then staff will move to the appellant presentations. And we will have two different presentations, first by appellant one, and then followed by appellant two, and then following that presentation, those presentations, then we will have heard from the public in terms of public comment, and then if any of the appellants reserve time for rebuttal, then they would be able to exercise their rebuttal time, if any. Following that, the council would then close the public hearing. There would be no more testimony from the appellants or the public. It would revert back to the council for deliberations, and in those deliberations, the council will be deliberating on everything, on the appeals as well as the specific use permit approval requested by the applicant.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. And then just thank you for your presentation, Kavitha. I'm still a little confused about what we're actually reviewing today. I think we're reviewing both, the 874,000 cubic yard plan, because that's where we have all the documents, right, that describe the project? And then also the 583 that we just have a preliminary grading plan for.
Correct. The application contains the project materials and related to the 874,000 cubic yard plan. What staff has proposed, and the applicant has agreed to this proposal, and in fact initiated the proposal, is a reduced fill alternative that arises out of the EIR process, which allowed for review of a reduced fill alternative. That reduced fill alternative has been provided further clarity with both the applicant's submittal of a 583 plan, although without the grading plan associated with it, but also is further revised through conditions of approval that staff went through with you tonight on how to further refine the reduced fill alternative. So to answer your question, centrally, yes, you are starting with the 874,000 plan and then looking at how it has been revised pursuant to the reduced fill alternative as described.
And I was looking in the staff report, and I know there have been submittals to SMARA. I think I was missing a date, and I'm sorry, I think packet page 228, like has the 870,000 cubic yard plan been submitted to SMARA? And same for the new one? Do we, do we have, I know we had their acceptance of the larger one, but have they given official notification response?
I think staff has all that detail.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. The most recent submittals that were, the applicant provided in July, were distributed to our reviewers at DMR. Essentially, they did not provide official comments on that submittal from this past summer. What they said is the city has, or I'm sorry, that DMR has previously provided comments, they have no additional comments. And so they just said, as long as you address, or the applicant addresses the previous comments that we have provided, that is sufficient.
Okay. And, sorry, just have a couple more, and I'll let you guys go. So I'm still trying to understand, like, all the different things that we're reviewing tonight, the specific plan, development plan, quarry use permit, variance, tree permit. At some point, can you explain to us, like, what documents we're supposed to review for each of those to be able to make the findings and where they are? And for example, the tree permit, I haven't found anything except going back to the EIR with an Arborist report, you know? So what are we, what are we ruling on as we review this project?
And I believe staff is prepared to answer that.
Yes, thank you. So like all development applications that we see here at the City of Pacifica, very rarely do we have an actual document that says, this is the use permit application, this is the specific plan application. Usually what occurs is we get project plans, we get project materials, and the combination of all of those are the different permit approvals that the city is going to be acting on. So if you read the resolution, one of the conditions of approval says plants, X, Y, Z, that those are the permits. So all the materials that are in the record are the permits.
And I'm sorry, where is that? She mentioned the resolution page, and I didn't have the same packet page number.
So it's on packet page 247. It's condition of approval one.
Okay, I'll go back and look at that. And then just one more general question. As we're looking at environmental impacts of the project, it seems we have an obligation to ensure that the project minimizes those impacts, right? In terms of the SEQA review, the project goals that are in the staff report on page 230 say minimize grading to the maximum extent practical. I know the general plan also talks about ESHA, and alteration of landforms shall be minimized. So I'm a little confused, again, just as the project has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, all these different steps, right? So we started over a million, now we have 870, now we have 530, but now there might be further reductions as we consider a specific plan. And we might have other ideas about, that we might bring up today, about other ways to reduce the grading. I have some things I want to bring up. But I just want to, I mean, this is our obligation, right, to try to find, make sure we're doing the least environmentally damaging project.
Well, our obligation under SEQA is to review the project for any environmental impacts. And the, we have an EIR consultant, Mr. Stinson, who actually has performed that exercise. Now, to the extent the council wants additional mitigation measures or additional, you know, mitigation measures adopted as part of any approval, that can happen as well. So yes, the environmental document itself has been analyzed, prepared, and submitted for certification by staff and our environmental consultant. And staff and our environmental consultant believe, and we concur, that the environmental document, as prepared and presented to the council, is a legally adequate final EIR. That doesn't mean that the council can't add additional conditions or mitigation measures to reduce even further environmental impacts. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, okay. And then there have been some public comments, and this is really a legal question, about a stable project description. And it seems the project description has morphed a lot. So can you, can you talk to that? Do you still see this in its current form as a stable project under SEQA?
Yes, thank you for the question. And I'm Karen Murphy, I'm Assistant City Attorney. And the original project description was for the plan that included almost a million cubic yards of imported soil. With the change to the 874 cubic yard plan, a revised reclamation plan was studied with, which also revised the project description. And that was analyzed and then presented to the Planning Commission earlier this year. So that is the project description in the EIR. It's the 874 cubic yards of imported soil plan. What has been proposed and what is recommended in the resolution is an alternative that has been studied in the EIR, the reduced fill alternative. So the intent is not to update or revise the project description from the 874 cubic yard plan, but to basically look at one of the alternatives that is in the EIR, which is allowed by, is allowed by SEQA.
I'm sorry. And this exercise of the council taking a project applicant's proposal, and instead of adopting the applicant's proposal, that was analyzed in the EIR. If the EIR also, and which they all are legally required to do, analyzed a reduced alternative to lessen significant impacts, which our EIR did, the council, or the Planning Commission, any legislative body of the city, has the opportunity to pick that reduced alternative, or that lesser significant impact alternative, to reduce the impacts. And that is essentially what the council is, is doing. So that is really what is happening in terms of why there is no project description to reflect the 583 and perhaps even, you know, a lesser amount of fill. Because this project is, if it were to be approved, according to the staff's recommendation, would be approving an alternative to the applicant's proposal, which is done regularly by local agencies, for this reason, for the reasons that you've indicated.
Okay. And I have some other SEQA questions related to that later, but go ahead.
So I have questions, but I feel like they're going to lead into deliberation. So I think I want to wait on them. There's only one comment I have for staff. Thank you, for starters. I know how hard you worked on this. I totally appreciate that. The maps on page 207, they don't show my simple eyes anything, so I just don't understand them. And a rendering or something would have been a lot easier for me to understand. And that is a question because I went high at the end of it? You understand? So are there any renderings of what the map is trying to show us?
We have reviewed the applicant's presentation, and they have included a few renderings. So hopefully that will help visualize. If not, we can find some from older presentations. Thank you.
I agree with you about the maps. Generally speaking, even if they're not this small, I have a hard time with them. So having the maps with the full explanation would be helpful. I also wanted to ask if I'm understanding the basic process to be, the project that was submitted is an 874,000 cubic yard project. However, there's the possibility that the council could approve the smaller amount of dirt and imported fill, yet we don't have a specific outline of that project. We have, do we have a grading only? Is that what we have? That's as much as we have?
I will let staff answer the beginning of that question, and I may clarify in terms of what specifically, staff, what plans have you received from the applicant with regard to the 583 cubic yard plan?
Sure. We have one sheet of a preliminary grading plan that shows what it would, what they're intending to do with the 583, how they've reduced from the 874,000 cubic yards to 583, and where the grading is, and where they would be focusing their grading activities. So it's a preliminary grading plan.
A one-sheet preliminary grading plan.
That is correct.
And that's not unusual. What it means is that the final grading plan would be reviewed by staff with our, you know, peer reviewers as well, as, you know, condition number nine indicates, to assure that when that final grading plan does come in, it will be reviewed to assure that there is no more fill required than is absolutely necessary for the grading that they're proposing. And to assure that it meets all the conditions of approval that the council has laid out.
And with regard to the environmental analysis, that was done on the 874 cubic yard plan? Yes?
Yes.
But the EIR, and I think Mr. Stinson should also speak to this. The EIR was also included a reduced fill alternative, which was also analyzed, and I think Mr. Stinson should.
Yeah, so Brad Stinson with Rainy Planning and Management. Good evening. Yes, the draft EIR evaluated the larger project. As part of the evaluation, we had multiple alternatives to the proposed project, one of which was the reduced fill alternative. And that is what is, has been submitted. The intent of that submittal is to be a more fleshed-out version of what that alternative was described to be in the EIR.
And so was it the amount, 570?
Yeah, there wasn't an amount specified in the EIR. It was simply reduced fill sufficient to meet the minimum standards of SMARA. So it would meet essentially the project objectives while bringing in the least amount of fill without doing the engineering that has now been done and is before you.
Okay. I have another question. It does refer to previous plans. I don't know if that's an appropriate thing to ask at this juncture, or if it should wait.
I would say ask, and if it's appropriate to answer at this point, we'll let you know.
We'll put it, we'll put it aside. So you just mentioned the, the minimum fill required to meet, or the amount of fill required to meet the minimum requirements of SMARA. Yes? And yet, I know there have been plans submitted in the past that didn't have fill involved with them. Did those, were those plans not submitted to SMARA? Did SMARA never look at those plans and weigh in on those?
Yes, thank you. I can respond to that. So the previous plans, they were classified as no fills, but that's not really accurate. What those plans were, the 1990 plans, they were a no import fill. So there was still fill associated with those sites. That fill came from onsite. It involved taking some of the existing landforms, grading them down, grinding them down, and filling them in the quarry pit. So there was still fill. There was just no imported fill.
I see. I think that's all I have right now.
And I, just to add to that, I think I heard from, oh, I'm sorry, I don't, but the 1989 one was not just approved by the council, but was also approved by SMARA. So it is, it is a valid option, but I don't think was really analyzed in the EIR, perhaps, right, of a no import fill option.
Actually, the Alternatives Evaluation Chapter included a number of alternatives that were considered but dismissed from further analysis. And one of them was the no fill, because it would require knocking back some of the slopes, would essentially increase the area of disturbance, and would result in greater impacts from a bio standpoint, from disturbance, disturbance-wise. And so it was, in comparison to the proposed project, dismissed for those reasons.
While we're on the subject, may I?
No. Because basically, I'm asking a similar question to Sue, because the 2017 plan was a no fill plan, too. That's way more recent than the 1996 plans. And so how come, I mean, it seems like an appropriate plan. Why not?
The requirements under SEQA for the alternative evaluation is to reduce the impacts as identified for the proposed project. So under each topic area, if there's significant impacts, the alternatives are intended to aim at reducing what those significant impacts would be. So, for example, like I mentioned, for biological resources, there's potentially significant impact. There's many mitigation measures associated with biological impacts from the project. If we expanded, if the project was expanded to go beyond the area of disturbance as identified for the proposed project, there would be additional areas, additional habitats, et cetera. And so that, under that one topic area, for instance, the impacts would be greater for the no fill alternative as compared to the project.
Okay, can I ask one more?
Yes, you may.
Clearly.
Bill Bottoms owned this project. The reclamation was supposed to have been done 40 years ago. Why now? Why has SMARA not ever come forward in the last 40 years for us to do reclamation?
As the, as the SEQA consultant, under SEQA, we're reacting to the projects that are put in front of us. So I don't know that I could speak to the why, but we, we analyzed the, the application that was put before us as required by SEQA.
And I would just say generally that we have a legal obligation to process all applications that are submitted to the city. So the fact that they have submitted an application for a reclamation plan, we must process it.
Right.
Now, your question is, why wasn't that considered as another alternative? And I think you've gotten your answer from the environmental consultant.
Okay.
Thanks, Tiger.
Thank you. I'll follow up on some of yours also, now that we're in that neighborhood. Because I did not do much research into the 2016 specifically, but it kind of at a glance looks like the least invasive. How far did that process go? Was there an EIR? Was there a processing of the 2016?
Thank you. No, the 2016 plan was very preliminary. It was associated with the measure that went for public vote. And so the 2016 reclamation plan essentially assumed that the site would be developed. And because the voter initiative was turned down, there was no further work on the 2016 reclamation plan.
Okay, so 2016 presumes that there is a specific development, and therefore, it was presuming based on a development that someone had in mind. And when it was obviated that that specific development was not going forward, that plan was halted at that point. Do I get that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that plan was never reviewed by DMR either. That plan was not submitted to DMR for review. So we don't know that DMR felt that that plan met SMARA obligations. And we did not review it for SMARA obligations. So we have no way of knowing whether or not that 2016 plan would in fact meet SMARA requirements.
Understood. As a simple person with a simple chart in front of me, I first want to start by going over the, oh, that looks like a really good option. What happened there? You know, as a first step. And in talking with DMR, it sounded like we had a plan in hand and actionable in 1983. And since then, we have a plan in hand and actionable since 1998. It says 96 here. I'm not sure how much that differs from 98, except my understanding is the cut and fill might be slightly different. But my understanding from the Division of Mining Reclamation is that that 1998 plan we have in our hand to this day, as something that's been approved by the city, as something that's passed SEQA, as something that passes SMARA, that DMR has absolutely no problem with. So why is it that that hasn't happened already?
Thank you. So I can start a response for that, but really, I would turn it to the applicant. That plan, the 1980 plan, my understanding is there's, there's still permits that that plan would need to obtain. One of them is a coastal development permit. So I did confirm with coastal staff that, that the plan from the 1980, 1988?
1998.
1998 has not obtained a coastal development permit through California Coastal Commission. So there would still be additional actions that they would need to undertake before they could actually reclaim the site under that plan.
To be clear, if we were to pass this version tonight in some form or another, isn't the next step to go to coastal?
That is correct. There are still additional permits, one of them being coastal development permit with California Coastal Commission.
So in one version, it's already passed through council and SEQA and is ready to go to coastal. And in another, we get to deliberate on it before it goes to coastal.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And one note I would like to add on the 1988, 1998 plan, is that that plan was designed prior to the switch or the movement of Calera Creek. So the plan really, at a minimum, would need to be amended to address the implications, including the biological implications of that plan, now that that creek has entirely moved. So that's a practical issue that they're going to have to address with the 1998 plan.
I would respond to that with personal feelings, but then I'm going into deliberation rather than asking questions. I'll save it for later.
Well, I actually don't have personal feelings. I just have a factual question on that same point, if I may, to our, the SEQA consultant. For a plan that's 26 years old, such as we're describing, and I know it's 26 because 1998 is when my son was born, and recognizing what the city attorney just brought forward as one example, my question is, what would the biologic implications be? Like, in your, in your profession, would you take a plan that was created and evaluated under SEQA in 1998 and move those, those findings forward? Is it general practice to do that?
With a project approvals that old, it would most certainly need to be reviewed and considered for. and considered for what the change in conditions are out on the site. But again, we were, we reviewed the project that was before us. We didn't review that one, so.
Understood. Thank you.
Christine. Yeah, just another follow up to that one. I mean, okay, you're saying the impacts to the disturbed soil and the hilltops are perhaps more. Obviously, that hasn't been fully compared. This particular plan has huge potential impacts because of the imported soil that that plan didn't have. So, I mean, isn't that still a choice that we should be able to make? Like, you know, I think, obviously, I mean, what terrifies me the most about this project is the imported soil. And, you know, you miss one truckload and you've got, you know, the environment, the creek, and the ocean being impacted. And there's so many things that could go wrong in here, right? And so, I mean, just being able to limit imported soil could be a hu, could, could be a huge benefit if we could evaluate that.
Understood. One thing I should add, too, about the requirements under SEQA for the alternatives analysis. When identifying what the alternatives are, you look at the significant impacts and which ones can you reduce through the alternative. But the, the other side of the coin is that the alternatives need to meet most of the project's objectives. That's the other component. So the no fill doesn't meet a couple of the project objectives as well as potentially increasing some of those impact areas. And those are the reasons why we.
Can you clarify which project objectives aren't met?
Objectives two and eight.
Can you read those for us? I don't have them in front of me.
Yeah, I'll have to pull them up.
Oh, I was just gonna suggest that we move forward with the hearing so that we can.
Well, okay, the next.
But I will wait for Christine to get her answer.
Okay.
But that'd be my, that would be my request.
And maybe while he's looking that up, can I just ask about the Coastal Commission's review and especially understanding that this is an area of deferred certification? Then he's, there's a, there's an email from the Coastal Commission that says that, and I'll just read it. This is from Julian Honey to Stephanie on July 30th that says, note that the zoning designation for the quarry referenced in the submittal references the general plan. This is not certified zoning language by the Coastal Commission. And unless the new LCLUP is certified by the Coastal Commission, then the proposed zoning does not apply yet. So how does that factor into what we're doing today? Because a lot of the language in the findings refers to the 2040 general plan zoning.
Correct. And I would like Ms. Cervantes to respond to that. She was looking at that issue today.
One second, I just need to reread the email.
Okay. And I was, another email from the Coastal Commission from June 2, 23, was just shared with me before the meeting that said that the zoning change to PD that's required for HPD would also need to go for, would also need to be approved on a local coastal plan amendment. So I'm not sure if that's been addressed in the staff report either.
Oh, and just to be clear, Christine, I wasn't trying to stop your questions.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Because we have plenty of time to ask.
Yeah, I, I will stop there.
I think I had a little confusion myself over the premise of.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing this forward because I had similar questions about the proposed change in zoning.
Yes, so as I'm rereading this, the zoning designation is certified by the California Coastal Commission because our zoning map is certified. So what they're referring to is the general plan designation of... So, yeah, so they're referring to, I think, I think they're, they just used the wrong terms. The general plan designation that we have outlined is from the 2040 general plan. The 1980 LCLUP and the 1980 general plan don't have a designated land use designation for the site. It's called a special area. And so without having specific land use designation, the city staff has referred back to the only land use designation that we have, which is the 1940 general plan.
2040, 19?
2040.
Oh, I was like, whoa, that's going back.
Well, everyone got to laugh at least.
Yeah. And then back to the change, the, the change for the HPD variance to PD and the Coastal Commission saying that that can't be done without an LCP amendment. So is that something that we can even vote on now?
My understanding is because the area is a deferred area that the Coastal Commission would have to approve the land use, the rezone as part of their coastal development permit application that they are reviewing.
So essentially, it's the same as what we're doing with the EIR, if the council were to certify the EIR. The certification of the EIR does not make the EIR valid because that certification still needs to be actually certified by the Coastal Commission before that action can become final.
Okay. So do, do we still have an obligation to review the project to the Coastal Act requirements as part of this review?
No, no, our, our obligation is under our HPD zoning with regard to your specific question.
Okay. Okay, I'll let you answer my other question. It looks like you've got, got that, and then we can move on.
Yes, so the two objectives, and this might sound a little counterintuitive, but the first one is the reduction in grading because the project is essentially laying soil and grading. That's taken to mean that the area where grading will occur is going to be limited to this location. And the extent of additional grading of native soils to knock back all of the, all of the slopes to meet SMARA standards would be extensive.
Well, we don't really know how, how extensive, do we?
Extensive.
Extensive. Well, but I think you mean, I think you mean infeasible. You don't just mean expensive. That's not, that's not a factor.
Well, extensive. It'd be a lot of, it would be a lot of grading.
Oh, extensive grading.
Yeah, not expensive, sorry. Speak into the microphone a little more.
But the first one, so it wouldn't meet the project objectives because the project objectives want to have a lot of grading? Is that basically what you've said?
Well, the project objective was to minimize the grading, but within that footprint. So not to expand the area of the mine pit.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
All right.
And then the other objective is, is eight, to reclaim, let's see, reclaim the quarry to pre-mining conditions per SMARA, essentially. I'm paraphrasing.
Okay, I'll raise that question. I mean.
Thank you.
We've, we've seen pictures, right, from the Historical Society of what the hill used to look like when it just had a tiny bit of mining on it, right, from the 20s. So none of these applications are restoring this to pre-mining conditions. Have you looked at those images? I mean, can we really say that? So I don't think those project.
Yeah, if you're, if you're knocking back the, the elevation of the pre-mining hill is a certain elevation, if you have to go and knock that down, it wouldn't be pre-mining conditions. So to bring in soil and build back up to match that previous contour is, is kind of the, what that objective is trying to get at.
Okay, we'll go into deliberations later. Yeah.
Okay. Is everyone done asking questions? Okay, I have a question regarding process. There are two appellants, so they both get to speak?
Yes.
Now for 10 minutes, even though the applicant is an appellant, who gets to speak later?
Correct.
Okay.
No, no, he's, this is, this is his opportunity to speak.
Okay, then, then he doesn't have the 10 minutes later.
No, he has 10 minutes now, and then three minutes for rebuttal, should he choose to take.
To split it.
Well, no, he gets 10 minutes now, and then if he chooses, any appellant can have three minutes later for rebuttal. But their initial presentation is only 10 minutes long.
Okay.
And then if they want to take a rebuttal after hearing all the rest of public comment, they then have three minutes for that rebuttal.
Okay, that's not what this says. Okay, I don't know. Who wants to?
We should appeal one first.
One. Okay, Dan Stedjink, would you like to speak? You have 10 minutes.
Right away, Michelle first. Ms. Beckmeyer?
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Does she have the, you can step up to the podium. I think you have the, do you have the controller for your presentation?
Yeah, I have a standing demand for water loss to recuse and waiting for decision.
And then once you begin your presentation, have the timer set for 10 minutes and a two-minute warning for wrap-up. You'll see the light in the podium.
We're not quicker.
The clicker should be at the podium.
And what are our, what are our?
We need a bio break.
And I want to remind you that the planning commissioners have disclosed who they talked to or the general content of what they had. And only Beckmeyer has disclosed what generally she spoke about. All the other commission consultants have to rediscover what they discussed.
So that is not the case? So do you want to start your presentation?
Madam Mayor, are we taking a bio break?
And what about the recusal? And then we're gonna, I mean, he wants me to recuse?
Based on what I read in terms of the recusal, this is unrelated to any fair political practices conflict of interest.
Okay.
Relates to a relationship, if, if one even exists, but let's assume it does exist, that does not relate to the council member's immediate family. And you can, you can.
I don't even.
That is in fact true or not, you can state that for the record.
I will state that I don't know the Gil Martins at all, at all.
And, and I will just state that she's been publicly photographed at sporting events with them. And I will also state that it does affect her direct family on there. Her husband is a convicted felon on there, and the core of this argument.
Okay, we're, we're.
Where to start the timer?
Great. We're, we're taking a break.
Recording stopped.
Is PCT ready?
10 minutes. Is PCT ready? Yes. Thank you.
Recording in progress. Does the city attorney need to be here, though?
Yes, the city attorney needs to be here.
Oh.
City attorney on the way.
Okay, okay, your 10 minutes is starting now.
Excellent, thank you. As my appeal, I submit my original appeal, this PowerPoint, the appeal supplement, and all court cases cited in part or in full. The agenda does not contain a complete reclamation plan and cannot be voted on. The agenda does not contain a definable project plan, is not eligible for EIR or SEQA. This is the national, the Pacifica Quarry meets all four National Register of Historic Places criteria. I'm gonna blow these, these pretty quickly, but broad patterns of history, lives of persons significant in our past, significant distinguishable entity, likely to yield important information in prehistory or history. California Register of Historic Places is identical. Native American artifacts were found in the Clara Creek Water Treatment Plant construction 96, 97. Fishing nets, ceramic bowls, ancient charcoal fire sites. The quarry overhead view, you can see right here is the water reclamation plant. Tamigtac was a separate triblet or band in the quarry. They've got documented family patterns and genealogy. Right here is where they found the artifacts at 18 to 30 foot deep. Walsh Pacific was the contractor. Garcia Construction was a dirt contractor. Shirley Dry has an extensive YouTube video about all the artifacts found at the Pacifica Quarry, Native American, et cetera. It's fascinating. She's a Pacifica hero. Former planning commissioner wrote a letter to the editor for the Tribune saying, of note, same EIR was missing the misplaced Aloney artifacts, including the fishing nets that disappeared without explanation. Aloney bindium burial sites, similar to those found during the construction of the Clara Creek Water Treatment Plant. This is what the fishing nets may have looked like in another historical register location, the Berkeley Shell Mount, which is why they received status. Of note, in the same paper that the other article was in was the decision to keep an in-house city attorney. And it says, while the cost for an in-house attorney may be slightly higher, the immediate availability and focus only on the issues likely outweigh the difference. Good to know. Quarry overhead view again. James Folger, Special Agent of the Federal Bureau of Investigation, says Gil Martin and Varela bribed Mohamed Nuru and Rakology's Porter hundreds of thousands of dollars in labor and materials and a tractor worth $40,000. David Chu, city attorney of San Francisco, has debarred Varela William Gil Martin and all their companies from doing anything with the city of Pacifica, sorry, city of San Francisco. It's signed by Joseph Gil Martin and Alan Varela. It's also signed by William Gil Martin. They all signed this agreement. It was part of their plea bargain. They agreed to be barred with their companies from San Francisco. It also terminated all contracts without penalty. They were aware this was part of their punishment, and other cities might do the exact same thing without penalty. After all, Gil Martin and Varela bribed Public Works Nuru and Rakology's Porter while they were currently applying to City of Pacifica's planning department. Gil Martin and Varela and their companies are clearly aware they have no recourse for being kicked out of cities for bribing their way into SF, and know they cannot simply add the word Pacifica to their illegal companies to make them legal in SF or elsewhere. Gil Martin and Varela would likely have no recourse if Pacifica chose to deny this application and bar them for the same period until March 1, 2026. City of Pacifica and San Francisco have many spheres of influence that overlap, many property borders, and thousands of contacts. Sharp Park Golf Course is owned by the City of Pacifica. Sharp Park Archery Range, San Mateo County itself was fully enveloped in San Francisco County until 1856, and thousands of legacy contracts and deeds still exist regarding that. Pacifica could ban the individuals at any time without a bribery ordinance simply because they have a backbone. Applicant Gil Martin was sentenced to eight months in prison.
No clapping, please.
On January 11, 2024, eight months. calculation duration shows he got out 12 days ago on there, on September 11. If he served his full time, he's still barred, his company's still barred until March 1, 2026, like he is. Here's a picture of the 2015 plan. The single-family homes at the top have already folded into the water where those were going to be. The quarry remediation project map omits the erosion. where those were gonna be. The quarry remediation project map omits the eroding coastline completely. The US Topographic Map shows flattened level area where the pit is. Um, unique surface mine at the junction of San Andreas and Gregorian Pillar Cetus Faults has suffered earthquake faults, damaged three times in recent history. The application incorrectly represents the quarry pit as being a much larger pit mine, similar to the Calgary Super Mine in Australia. Here's what an open pit mine classically looks like. Gil Martin and City Martin repeatedly advised partner of mine at inspected site, but the only inspection DMR had was for Roland Yip of the City of Pacifica, who inspected this in 2023. He didn't fill out the face estimate for the estimate of the cost on there, which is why they flagged it. Mr. Yip does not appear on the DMR list of certified mine inspectors that the DMR provides, Department of Mining Reclamation. For decades, the quarry pulled, had a sand dredge at the Surf Line at the north end of Rockaway Beach, and was pulling out between 50 tons a day and 1,200 tons, sorry, 1,200 tons a day of sand and gravel. Supplement 1 shows the calculations of there, and Supplement 2 has a 1910 article talking about ENB Stone's big contract, and uh, they have 30 scarloads daily. In the, uh, you can see here that the, um, here's a close-up of the sand dredge that's causing everybody in Rockaway Beach lots and lots of erosion problems. This was going on for decades and decades, between 50 tons a day and 1,200 tons a day. You can see, here's the Ocean Shore Railroad's actual freight cars from the archives here. 80,000 pounds capacity, commercial rock stationed at San Francisco. Those 30 cars a day, 500, uh, Ocean Shore Railroad rock cars each month held 80,000 pounds each. So that's 667 tons a day being pulled out of the Rockaway shoreline. And again, the Coastside Common article from 1910 shows 1,200 tons a day being pulled out from the Rockaway shoreline. There is no mention in this reclamation plan of any dredging which is a part of this mine, which for entire history of its mine, it has been the major mining component of this mine, and it's not mentioned once in their reclamation plan. Rockaway Beach homeowners are some of the most impacted by decades of mining activity, yet the reclamation plan ignores the coastline and Rockaway's needs entirely. Applicant Gil Martin has failed to accurately represent the extent quarry has been reclaimed by wildlife, including mountain lion and bobcat. Applicant incorrectly presents documented presence of western pond turtle, California red-legged frogs, and Endangered Species Act protected San Francisco garter snakes. In 2022, I walked the Pacific Quarry with a small group and photographed juvenile red-legged frogs. I visited them again three days later and photographed them again. On the sixth day, they were all deceased, and their small wetland area smelled strongly of chlorine. You don't need an anti-bribery ordinance to protect the people of Pacifica and its assets. You swore an oath to protect from all enemies, foreign or domestic. This is a domestic enemy. City of San Francisco and the City of San Francisco Attorney has barred these guys from doing business because they're bribing public officials at the exact same time they're negotiating a contract. Christian Murdock has a letter on page three saying, attached is a 2013 letter I referenced in which it says the mine was deemed stable with no identified public health and safety issues. Um, Savita Kumar has a letter from SMARA saying that any imported fill is beyond the purview of SMARA, and you can, uh, ask her personally about that. Again, don't approve this project. Thank you very much. Pacifica, Pacifica is not a dump.
Please.
Thank you.
Okay, do you want us to take another break? We will. Please, no clapping. You're doing great, most of you, but someone-
Pacifica is not a dump. Thank you.
Okay, the, the next applicant, I'm sorry, the next appellant, Paul Hule.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. I'm Alicia Guerra with Buckhalter. I filed the appeal on behalf of Preserve at Pacifica and also Bayland Soil Pacifica. I'm gonna speak for a couple of minutes here to address some of the comments that you made, then I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Guernsey, who is going to comment on SMARA and the issues associated with the appeal, and then, uh, Mr. Hule is gonna speak about this project. So first, I want to address, um, this notion somehow that this project is unstable. It's actually not unstable. Um, the point of filing this appeal was because the Planning Commission just flat-out denied the project and left us no choice, left us between a rock and a hard place, and so we are going forward with the 870,000 cubic yard project because that is the project, that is the revised project. The issue from the prior conversations, the prior meetings at the Planning Commission was that the community, as you've heard, didn't like as much imported fill as associated with that project. So what we proposed was to take the reduced fill alternative, as Mr. Stinson indicated is included in the SEQA document, and try to use that as a framework to address their concerns, propose further mitigation, propose a lessening of imported fill to try to further reduce impacts that were already determined to be less than significant. And you know what? SEQA says you can do that. We didn't do anything you're not supposed to do. And in fact, with this project, all we're trying to do is follow what the law requires. So I am going to turn this over to Mr. Guernsey to talk about what the law requires when it comes to reclamation. You can't just let your property fall into the ocean. You have to actually reclaim it after it's, the site's been mined. And we cannot mine it the way that, or we cannot restore it in the way that it was in pre-mining conditions as the question arose previously, because the conditions on the property have changed, because the Coastal Commission has issued coastal development permits for the changes to Clara Creek and the wastewater treatment plant. So things have changed. Mr. Guernsey's gonna talk about what the next steps are with respect to this appeal, um, should the project be denied, and the next steps going forward. And then Mr. Hule is gonna talk about this idea of trying to use the reduced fill alternative as a way of facilitating planning, should you be interested. And in the end, I'll just comment that we have our team here to address comments, questions about the Coastal Act, questions about the biological resources, and we'd like to reserve some time to address our rebuttal to these comments. Thank you.
You have three minutes later, or do you know the time, Sarah?
Right now, there's seven minutes remaining in the presentation.
So they can add their seven minutes to the three minutes later? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Vardalas and the honorable City Council members. Uh, my name's Adam Guernsey. I'm a mining attorney from Sacramento, California. Uh, I've been practicing, uh, SMARA for the last 12 years, representing both, uh, private mining operators and counties across the state. Um, I know a lot about SMARA, uh, and my firm has about 75 years of combined experience in practicing in the area. Um, so I'm here to ask, answer any questions about SMARA and the reclamation plan you might have. Um, but before we get to that, I just want to say that state law requires that, uh, the applicant reclaim this quarry into a safe and stable condition consistent with SMARA and the city's local, uh, surface mining ordinance. That condition does not exist today. It's not, uh, especially with the slopes, it's not stable as a matter of law. It's not stable as a matter of practice. There's been a lot of tragic incidents that's happened at the quarry, and it's, uh, our client's obligation and right to reclaim that site consistent with state law. Um, going back into the rec plan history, making sure we fully understand the application that's before you today, there was an original rec plan application that included 970,000 cubic yards of imported fill. Uh, as a result of, uh, conversations during the first Planning Commission meeting, the applicant agreed to reduce that to 874,000 cubic yards of fill, and that, based on engineering analysis, is the absolute minimum of fill required to leave that slope in a two-to-one horizontal-to-vertical slope configuration, which is a prescriptive SMARA requirement. Any less, and those slopes would not be consistent with SMARA. Now, following the working workshop group, there was a submittal on July 2nd where the applicant came up with a voluntary condition whereby they would phase their reclamation over the course of four years, filling 583,000 cubic yards. But during that time, it was understood that the applicant would work with the city to see if there was some end-use other than open space that could, that the city could approve, which would allow less fill to leave those slopes stable. I want to clarify, the 874,000 cubic yards fill reclamation plan is what is being applied for, and even if the City Council were inclined to approve the reduced phase approach, it's really just phasing, and if there were no ultimate agreement on future development, the applicant would be required to import the remainder of that fill to leave the states, to leave the slopes stable from a SMARA perspective. So I need to clarify that point. Um, at the end of the day, you know, I just want to clarify and confirm that the reclamation plan that's been before the city is legally compliant with SMARA. It's been reviewed by DMR. It's been analyzed by a well-prepared SEQA document from Rainey, uh, that does work like this all over the state, and they do excellent work, so you have nothing to worry about there. And the city is obligated, when presented with a legally SMARA-compliant reclamation plan, to approve it. And if the city doesn't approve it, there are appellate remedies that are available to the applicant that takes that decision out of the city's hands. And there's one last comment I need to address. It came in a letter written towards the end of the comment period last week that suggested that if there was an appeal to the State Mining and Geology Board, the State Mining and Geology Board couldn't actually approve it because they can't certify a SEQA document. That's absolutely false. State Mining and Geology Board is lead agency for a variety of surface mining, um, uh, lead agencies across the state. Uh, Yuba County, one, the city of Palm Springs, another. They can approve, uh, they can approve SEQA documents, certify EIRs, and approve reclamation plans. So there's, there's no way to avoid approval simply by declining to certify the EIR. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Paul. Thank you.
I better make this real quick, I guess. Good evening. Um, I, I brought these documents. My name's Paul Hule. I'm, uh, the, um, property owner. Um, I brought these studies that were done for the reclamation, and these are just some of the reports. And so you can see, there's thousands and thousands of pages, and if I take all the email, is my time up?
You have two minutes remaining.
Okay. Well, if I took all, all the email correspondence, there would be much more. But, you know, it has been nearly, I'll try to make this a little bit shorter, I had more to say, but it has been nearly 30 years since, you know, the body has acted on this. And I'm not here tonight for any other purpose for you than to ask to approve a state-mandated reclamation plan and thereby create 88 accessible open space for the community. So I will end with a quote from Martin Luther King Jr. He reminded us that the arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends toward justice. Change takes a long time. We've been here for 30 years on this project, but it does happen. Change will happen at the quarry in Pacifica in one fashion or another, and I really hope that it will be done with an affirmative quote on, vote on the, um, alternative that was proposed by city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, no comments. Okay. Okay, um, does counsel have any questions for the appellants?
But I do have a comment. Is that okay?
Yes.
We need to be kind and considerate to everyone in this space. Everyone.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else? Okay.
Sorry, I-
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm, I don't know, I'm still trying to sort through, and I haven't read what Dan's put in front of us, but, um, um, one of the things the, the second appellant said, and this is for planning staff and, and legal, um, is that if, if we don't go through the specific plan, and maybe I heard this wrong, but if you can confirm, that the project would actually go back to the 874,000 cubic yards, not the 500 and whatever it was, 84, 83.
83.
Yeah, so they, they will, I, I'm not sure I understand the question, but they will appeal the 874,000 reclamation plan if, if in fact the counsel denies their appeal tonight, or in the future.
I guess, I'm not clear that if, if we approve the 584, but the specific plan doesn't work out, that they can't go back to the 874 at that time. I, I thought that's what I heard, but I'm, and maybe we can ask for clarification of the appellate.
Yes, thank you. There is a condition of approval in the proposed regulations, condition nine, that if there is no specific plan, then it would go up to the 583. Up to the 583 is the maximum that, that we are recommending in the resolution.
And they have agreed to that. I know that's what staff is saying, but-
They did, they did propose that and agree to it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Wait, you can't do it either. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. This is questions for you guys.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
The, the reduced fill was a proposal as an accommodation. There needs to be a minimum of the 870,000 cubic yards to have legally compliant SMARA slopes at two-to-one. The accommodation was a four-year phased period within which there was to be discussions with the city regarding an end-use that's different than the proposed open space. And if there was perhaps an agreement reached and the city approved development, and that development allowed us to reduce fill, then perhaps we could go under the 870. But the, the phased alternative for those four years was merely to provide enough time for the parties to actually engage in that discussion. But if there's no development approved at the end of the day, as a matter of law, to have stable slopes, we need the 873,000 cubic yards. I hope that clarified.
Okay.
So we're not, we, there's no world where a simple 583,000 cubic yards allows us to reclaim the site consistent with SMARA. It just can't happen.
Okay, but, well, I, I understand what the applicant's attorney is saying, but the reality is if the counsel approves, the, upholds the appeal and approves the reclamation plan along with the conditions that staff has proposed, the ultimate fill that will be allowed on the property would be 583 cubic yards. That, 800, 583,000 cubic yards of imported fill. That is our condition that we are imposing on the project. I know that isn't what the applicant proposed, but we have revised the applicant's proposal with regard to the 583 cubic yards.
So, but even if we approve the 583 cubic yards, they could still appeal the 870 to SMARA?
Yes, they could.
Okay. And, and just the whole, the whole idea of the specific plan, um, I mean, I mean, it's a good idea, and it's called for in our general plan, but the site, the site is allowed to have visitors serving commercial by right, right? So technically, if the specific plan process doesn't go through for whatever reason, they could still bring forth applications for a hotel and other things, right, that wouldn't necessarily need a specific plan, and that would therefore potentially reduce the grading quantities.
Correct. And, and any grading that they proposed, as I was stating earlier, would be reviewed by staff and our peer-review consult, geotechnical consultants to assure that there wasn't more grading than was needed for the proposed development. Whether it be the, um, existing uses allowed under our zoning- Whether it be the existing uses allowed under our zoning, or if a specific plan, a formal specific plan process is approved in the future, it would be whatever is proposed in that specific plan.
Okay, but then if it's just conservation, if they decide to land bank it or whatever, but they still need to reclaim it, what I'm hearing is that they need the eight-hundred-and-seventy-four?
Correct. That, that, that is, that is their position.
Okay. And, and can you confirm the SMRA's powers in terms of being a lead agency and certifying CQ? I know there's some things that they, they, they can't do, right, that are the responsibility of the city. Can you, can you confirm what they can do and what they can't do?
Right, they would, if, if this application were appealed to SMGB, the Surface Mining and Geology Board, they would have the authority to approve a reclamation plan. They would not have the authority to certify the environmental impact report. That would have to be remanded back to the city on remand to give directions to the city on how they should approve the reclamation plan, and then to simultaneously do whatever environmental work would be necessary to approve that reclamation plan.
And I'd also like to add that there are city approvals, including rezoning and legislative approvals that are required in order to move forward with the reclamation plan. And the SMGB board does not have authority over the city, you know, for example, the rezoning and, and the other permits aside from the reclamation plan.
Mary? Oh, Sue?
I had a question along the same lines as Christine. And now I've lost it. So let me, I'll come back. I'll come back.
Well, if there aren't any other questions from council, we're going to go to public comment.
I'll hold mine then.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to now go to public comment. I will read three cards again. No clapping. I'll gavel. If I gavel twice, we're going to take a break. So I'm going to call you three at a time. And be nice, like Mary said.
Sorry, just, just as a point of order, this is the first time I've done this. If we still have questions, like, like for Dan Stuckink, can we ask those later on?
They will have three more minutes after public comment.
So we can ask questions and they can?
And, and we can ask questions after that. Okay. Ready? Jason Skaman followed by Mary Ann, I mean, Jennifer Skaman, that wasn't even close. Owen Brizze, Brizez. Okay? Jason?
Should I start?
Yes.
No, get, one moment while I adjust the clock, please. Mayor Vadoles just confirming that you said two minutes per comment?
Yes.
Okay. So the, the timer will be set to two minutes. You'll receive a notification at the thirty-second mark to wrap up. And you may begin when you're ready.
Yeah, Owen Brizgees, 1203 Galvez, Pacifica. I just want to thank you. I thank everybody for all the effort that's been put in to date. It's a lot of, a lot to, to sink in. I would like to say what's proposed in front of you is a Class III landfill, which is taking the, you know, industrial mistakes of San Francisco and San Mateo and importing them into Pacifica and dumping them there. The alternative to this plan for a generator of this contaminated, toxic soil would be to bring it to Ox Mountain in Half Moon Bay, a certified, regulated Class III landfill owned by Republic Services, a sixty-three-billion-dollar publicly traded company. And why I'm so enamored by that is that, that dump accidents and dump impacts can be catastrophic when malfeasance, when oversight, when mistakes are made, and they can ruin a environment. When you have a corporate entity, there's accountability, and there are people that are going to make that right. Here in Pacifica, we have a Baylands Pacifica LLC Incorporated in 2018 in San Leandro. The only project they will ever do is importing this soil into Pacifica. They do not have the, they think they have a, a loophole to bring this contaminated soil into Pacifica. They do not. I'm a registered structural engineer, civil engineer in the state of California. I guarantee you, SMRA does not require the city of Pacifica to acquiesce to allowing a dump to reclaim the, the quarry. The requirements of SMRA do not prescribe a two-to-one fill. The attorney is not an engineer, and he is not reading the provisions correctly. The, there are five different locations in the geotechnical report that declare the quarry stable.
Thank you.
It's limestone.
Thank you.
It's a Franciscan complex.
Jennifer? No, okay. That's the first one. If I do it again, we're taking a break. Really, you can't clap. You've been doing so well. Okay. Jennifer? And then Owen?
No, Owen just went.
Oh, that was Owen? Okay, the other two are, are not here then. Okay, Richie Beltran, Pavin Johnson, and Lois Marshall Ward. So is Richie here?
Hello, I'm Richie Beltran. I'm a descendant of the Ramatoush. My ancestors are Timiktak village. I, I have to, what's that?
Speak into the mic, please.
Yeah, I have to address something. The applicant here, their lawyer, these guys, they just keep doing that. I had to, I had to address this before. They talk about the tragedies that happened. There's a tragedy that happened, somebody falling off the west slope, not into the quarry, and it's disgusting to use a death to try and further yourself financially. I mean, let's honor that person that died, and let's not pretend and try and use that to sway the public and sway you all. I, I want to thank you for your acknowledgement, your land acknowledgement. It was beautiful, the words were beautiful. What does it mean? Land acknowledgement. To honor our ancestors, that they actually existed, that they were here, the things that they went through, that it was unceded territory, it was never given, that stolen land. That's not even land for any of us, anyone here to be determining what happens on there. That should be put back in indigenous hands. That's the right thing to do. You can't own stolen land. You can't make decisions on stolen land. You go to prison for stealing things. You know, they know about that. You're the people that you're about to trying to, that are trying to work with you here and do business with you, the same ones that have been kicked out of San Francisco for doing dirty dealings. So back to the ancestors, let's really honor them. If we're going to acknowledge the land and acknowledge the ancestors, let's acknowledge who they are, what happened to them. There was extermination period that happened. They were murdered, they were enslaved in that quarry. That quarry is a sacred site. Our ancestors were enslaved there. They were murdered there, this massacre site there. That's a sacred site. You don't just waltz in there and just do whatever you want to and haul in a bunch of toxic material without consulting people, the people that are connected to that land, us, the Ramatoush people.
Thank you, your time's up.
If you really want to acknowledge it, that's how you acknowledge it. You acknowledge the ancestors and.
Thank you. Thank you. Pavin Johnson followed by Lois Marshall Ward.
Hoi, my name is Pavin, and I am a citizen of the Kwampan Nation of Oklahoma and an active member of the Bay Area Indigenous community. I was present at the planning committee meeting, and I sent two messages there that I'll reiterate here. The first message is that of love and solidarity for our Ramatoush relatives extends far beyond Pacifica and across Native America. Many eyes are being drawn towards your city and the decisions you will make tonight. Filling the quarry would lead to the desecration of the resting place of a people's ancestors, a people who are here today in front of you, working to rebuild despite the violence done to them in the past and here in the present day. Your votes tonight will determine whether you're going to be in addition to the long and terrible history of indigenous genocide and displacement, or are you going to be part of righting these wrongs. The second message I bring is one of concern for your town. At the planning committee, it was mentioned that the trucks bringing dirt through your town could kick up clouds of dust, and that this dust may contain hazardous materials. As someone from an indigenous community suffering the health consequences of having tons of hazardous dirt haphazardly dumped around it at the Tar Creek Superfund site, I pray your residents do not experience even a fraction of that suffering. Please do the right thing and vote against filling the quarry. Please search your hearts and stand on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you. Lois followed by Linda Peebles and Mark Hubbell.
Hi, I'm Lois Marshall Ward, and thank you for listening to my comments tonight. I would like to also thank the city council. You had really great questions, and I really appreciate all the time you're putting into this. I've lived in Pacifica for over thirty years, and I am strongly against the quarry. I'm sorry, I've lived in Pacifica, I've lived in Pacifica for over thirty years, and I'm strongly against the project, the quarry project. It will increase traffic dramatically in Valamar and also on Highway One. I'm also very concerned about the, the dirt that would be brought in. As is mentioned, it could be unsafe and has potentially devastating environmental impacts. The quarry is a beautiful place that is loved by the community. The planning commission voted five to zero to deny the project. Please respect the expertise of the planning commission and the people of Pacifica by voting no on the quarry project. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Peebles, Mark Hubbell, and Cata Gomes, Gomes, sorry.
Good evening, my name is Linda Peebles, and like many, many others in the Pacifica community, my family is adamantly opposed to the Rockaway Quarry reclamation plan. Bayland's soil plan to import enough waste soil to fill one-hundred-and-forty-six trucks per day, six times, for, for almost four years, would be a total nightmare. This huge project has many environmental, health, and safety issues, and traffic would be intolerable. Young children playing outside of Valamar School would suffer not only from the constant noise from these dump trucks, but also from the dusty debris floating through the wind from the daily dumping process of that soil. And we could never really feel safe about the true toxic nature of that soil, no matter what the soil test results we are given by Bayland. Because when two of the company's owners have been convicted of bribery and fraud and are banned from doing business with San Francisco, how could we trust what they tell us? There's a lot of confusion tonight here anyway, so I urge you, urge you, please vote no on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Hubbell, Cata Gomes, and Nancy Tierney.
Good day, council members and staff. First, I find it very offensive that the death of one and the severe injuries of another woman is being used to validate the false need for the quarry fill. Neither of these tragedies had anything to do with the need to fill the quarry. Both incidents happened well outside of the fill zone discussion here. I called the California Department of Conservation Division of Mine Reclamation and asked them what was needed to be done in the quarry to safety sta, to meet safety standards. I was told by a senior staffer well familiar with this project that the standard was to make the quarry safe for recreational purposes. That was told to me three times in that conversation. The current quarry owner must have been aware of this when he submitted his own plan without any fillback in 2016. What we should be concerned with is the extreme new dangers that this current proposal actually creates. The applicant's protocol for pre-delivery toxicity testing of the imported soil is sketchy at best. It's awful. The first, the most important process for ensuring public safety should be thoroughly delineated prior to seeking approval from the public and Pacifica City Council and staff. The applicant is proposing some delivery schedule between forty and eighty diesel-fueled, owner-operated, maintained full trucks of soil every business day for four years. This is particularly dangerous to public health. Diesel engines are a major source of fine particle pollution. The elderly and, and people with emphysema, asthma, chronic heart, and lung disease are especially sensitive to fine particle pollution. Numerous studies have linked elevated particle levels in the air to increased hospitalization admissions, emergency room visits, asthma attacks.
Thank you, Mark. Your time is up.
And premature deaths.
Thank you.
Among those suffering.
Cata Gomes followed by Nancy Tierney and Char, oh, Charlie Schwab? Okay, go ahead.
Greetings all, my name is Cata Gomes, Ramatoush, documented Ramatoush descendant of the village of Timiktak along Calera Creek. I am opposed to any fill in the quarry basin. You mentioned in your land acknowledgement that you respect us as the descendants of this land, unceded ancestral homeland, and that you respect us as the stewards of this land. And the applicant, both the Bayland soils and Mr. Hula has staff members and parts of their, of their companies that are convicted of crimes of being dishonest. How can we trust what they are saying to us now? Their plan to restore a pond after they've destroyed the habitat three to four years prior is not enough. Those creatures have been impacted for years before they planned to restore anything. Also, the trail that has been so dangerous that people have lost their lives at and been injured is not being addressed by the applicant. They have no concern for that dangerous trail along the outer ridge. I have been doing land use consultation for post at San Vicente Redwoods. There's a huge quarry site there. There's no reclamation, no fill in that quarry. At the San Francisco, at Santa Cruz campus, their quarry is an amphitheater as an outdoor lecture hall. Also, I would like to say that.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you for your time. If you'd like to speak with me further, I would love to.
Thank you. Nancy?
Good evening, Nancy Tierney, Pacifica resident, and I'm humbled to follow Cata and her words. I've tried to follow the discussion around this project, including previous proposals, the technical considerations around zoning and HPD overlay, the state agency requirements, and I've listened closely to public comment, which, while varied and wide-ranging, has coalesced in opposing the proposed reclamation project. I stand with the majority of Pacifica residents in this case and urge you to not adopt the resolution before you. Here are my primary reasons. One, after considerable deliberation, the planning commission, and you've heard this a number of times, rejected the quarry project, the reduced fill alternative. Two, we have yet to hear why an earlier no-fill option, or is the consultant called it a no-import fill option, isn't feasible. We've listened to developers propose one project after another that reduces the number of truckloads of dirt each day, yet we would still, the quarry would still serve as a dumping ground. Three, I along with many folks recognize that some site restoration is needed, namely to make the trails in the west section safer. Four, our city should pay attention to the significance, again, you've heard of the quarry as an ancestral home of the Ramatoush Aloni and the Timiktak village. And last, I'd ask who benefits from this, the proposed project? And the answer is not Pacificans and visitors to our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Charlie Schwab, Schwab? Okay. Followed by Ron Makel. Followed by Ron Makel and Emile Cohen?
Hello, Charlie Schwab, been in Pacifica for 20 years. Could we bring up BaylandPacifica.com on the monitor?
No. We cannot. No.
Okay, thank...
Go ahead. We cannot.
Okay, so we can't do that. Everybody can read on their own what it says. You know, city council, you've, you've...
Can you speak into the mic directly?
How's that?
Thank you. Perfect.
Okay, great. Okay, so you mentioned rigorous monitoring. What does that mean? That means nothing unless there's more information. We have no idea where the dirt is coming from. Only thing we know that the dirt's not coming from Santa Clara. I don't know why Santa Clara's been singled out as not having good dirt, but other places don't have good dirt either. So Valamar Elementary School, the discompany thinks they're going to be able to control the truckloads and not, and not, and stage these trucks during school hours so that they're, to mitigate traffic problems. I've been in construction most of my life, and I know about logistics, and to, where's the staging area? This company has never talked about staging area. Where are they going to stage these trucks? How do you control trucks in the Bay Area? We have so much traffic, we can't even get to Oakland in a reasonable amount of time. You can't control these trucks. This company is not, they're going to subcontract all these things. They don't have trucks of their own, they don't have heavy equipment operators, everything's going to be subcontracted. Where is the control going to be? And as far as, you know, safety in the quarry, nobody, you know, GGNRA, that can be dangerous over there, too. Hang lighting's dangerous, but that's allowed, too. So when they try to buffalo us into thinking that it's dangerous, it's ridiculous. Boy, I could talk all night here, but you won't let me because I think I got my time up.
No, thank you. You're done. Thank you. Ron Makel, Emile, and then Victor Carmichael.
Okay, Madam Mayor, council staff, it's me again, Ron Makel, Rockaway. First, I'd like to point out something that I pointed out last week is, you know, the Planning Commission spent a lot of time on this issue. They are very, were very well informed when they made their last judgment on that. Certainly, this pile of papers over here and what Mr. Hula indicated, the volume of emails that he got, and I'm sure you've got, all you've gotten, that's, you know, a lot of time is spent on this. These commissioners informed from every corner of the spectrum of this issue. So I, you know, they made a very well-informed decision, and I hope you respect that. The other thing, the other thing has always been an issue with me on this, I really would like to see the quarry property, property west of the creek to the ocean, to be put in a conservation movement. You know, this property has a lot of value, recreational, biological, scenic, archaeological, and the other one I think I had probably was historic. So it's got a lot of values to it that would really benefit this town, and I hope that the owner, you know, would consider something of that sort. Keep development off that property, and that's really a main concern to me. I don't like the idea of all this dirt coming in here, all, you know, four years of dump trucks. I don't think we need any dirt here. I don't agree with, there's no SMAR, there's no SMAR mandate either, so, anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Emile, followed by Victor Carmichael, and then Rich Campbell.
Hi, good evening. My name's Emile. I've been a Pacifica resident since 2010. I'm not going to speak about the quarry project because...
Put the mic up a little.
My apologies.
Thank you.
I'm normally too loud. I'm not here to support the quarry project, as you can see by this pin on my chest. I'm here by context for what the average Joe has to do if they want to build Pacifica. I finally got my permit after just south of 10 years of trying. I've now begun my project. I'm doing all the work myself, that's why it took so long. I had to get a KM-17 test and a special waste profile so that I could bring soil to Ox Mountain. I don't think that's what these guys are going to do, as the engineer in the first speaker said. If I had to do that, why don't they? I don't understand the process. That's it.
Thank you. Victor, then Rich Campbell, then Pete Shoemaker.
My name's Victor Carmichael.
Speak into the mic, please.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I find this a very unusual situation. Our city council is being urged by the city staff to override the decision by its own Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's had three intensive, deliberative, and interactive sessions with the applicant. The planning department and the public has finally rejected this plan. The plan, as we know, involves filling the coastal open space containing dormant, an dormant ex-quarry with many hundreds of thousands of cubic tons of unwanted dirt from construction sites that must be tested, and they call it a restoration. And its project, for years, will totally disrupt a popular trail and cause a traffic nightmare. Pacifica's citizens and the Planning Commission are both in agreement that the so-called restoration should be rejected. Each time it came up before the Planning Commission chamber, the chambers here were packed, just like tonight. Many conditions have been added tonight. They do not change the underlying concept. The concept seems to be bad, and practice will be worse. There will be a pitchfork parade once the good citizens of Pacifica start getting stuck behind 10-ton loaded dump tugs belting decent diesel fumes and knowing this will go on for years. Claiming the state is requiring the replication, the reclamation under SMAR is disingenuous. The Division of Mine Reclamation that administers SMAR is not prodding the city to restore it with a fill option. They are only concerned with safety. On the face of it, this all seems like a simply convoluted maneuver to get a building pad in preparation for some later-to-be-announced project. There must be a better way to restore this site. After all this research has shown...
Thank you, Victor. Your time, Victor, your time is up. Thank you. Rich Campbell, Pete Shoemaker, George Yetrakis.
All right, Madam Mayor, council. Rich Campbell, Valamar, just want to say, don't be, don't get scared away by this imaginary threat that we're going to lose local control, that SMAR is going to take, that DMR is going to take over if you deny the project tonight. The SMAR regulations make clear, it's CAL Code Regulation 3651, it limits the state board's jurisdiction to hear appeals from the city unless the app, unless the person making the appeal really makes clear that on the record, the city didn't abide by its own, in this case quarry code, in its own reclamation plans. And here, there's a lot of reasons why you could deny this project under the reclamation, under our own Pacifica reclamation plan. You've got PMC 9-205, which requires the applicant to submit a reclamation plan, including the final grading of the site. There's no final grading plan for the 574 cubic, 100,000 cubic yard alternative. And by the way, there's no grading plan for the 400,000 cubic yard alternative. And there is a 400,000 cubic yard alternative nobody's talking about, but that's the one where the applicant says, if we approve his specific plan for development, he'll limit it to 400,000. Where's the plan for that? Where's the grading plan? So there's other things, general plan conformity, the traffic congestion at Highway One in Raina del Mar is already F. The applicant and the planning department have studiously avoided addressing how traffic congestion caused by the dump conforms with the circulation element of the general plan. They'll go back to the VMT analysis in the, in the EIR, but that's, that's just for SEQA. You could look at traffic congestion under the general plan circulation element. Please do, because the traffic's going to be horrendous. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Pete, followed by George Yetrakis, and then Suzanne Moore.
I want to follow up on what Rich said about the intent of the SMAR law. The whole intent of the SMAR law is to do what's best for the community, return the land to the place where it benefits the community. This plan is terrible for the community, and it goes specifically against the intent of the SMAR law. And you're told that if you deny it, that the state will then join with the applicant to sue you to overturn the decision. Let's think about that for a minute. It's a small agency, bureaucratic agency of the state, guided by a law that says do what's best for the community, is going to try to overturn the will of the city council, the Planning Commission, and 99% of the people, and force Pacifica to dump massive amounts of potentially toxic soil on a very sensitive and very visible part of the California coastline near homes, businesses, and schools, directly above a crucial sewage treatment plant outflow in an area that the state knows and promotes is very likely to have a major earthquake anytime soon. It's the state's policy to have people prepare for the big one. So they're going to force Pacifica to prepare for the big one by putting a massive amount of dirt in a place where it could collapse and cause a catastrophe. And to do that, they're going to have to get, team up with a company whose founders have been convicted of felony bribery. To think that the state is going to take this on and have any chance of success is ridiculous. So you need to reject it, and when you do, we, the public, will back you 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. George, followed by Suzanne Moore, and Kurt Keest. Go ahead.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I really do appreciate invoking Dr. King. I found it a bit pandering, but I appreciate it. I'm a fan of Dr. King. In that regard, I do want to provide a counterquote from somebody I'm also quite fond of, Vincent Van Gogh. Correct pronunciation, yes? Van Gogh? Van Gogh? Van Gogh, thank you. And he said, "The sadness will last forever." I just want you to take that in, "The sadness will last forever." If this project is approved, the sadness will last forever. We're under no compunction to approve this project. I'm only going to point out one aspect, it's the inadequate SEQA analysis and Division EIR. The applicant has admitted that the dump is in service of its development. This developer proposes multiple apartment buildings in this quarry without a binding development agreement to also build commercial. SEQA does not allow developers to only consider one phase of a project, but not the other. So in other words, no piecemealing. Thus, the applicant's environmental impact report is deficient. This alone is grounds for dismissal. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Moore, Kurt Keest, and Danielle Spando.
Thank you, city staff, for your report of this complicated and difficult issue. Complicated because it involves many unpredictable systems, and difficult because the community loves this land. I've been canvassing recently, and every single person I speak to opposes this reclamation plan. I don't think I've ever known any issue with near-total consensus. It's remarkable, actually, and it's important to recognize that. Since this council represents the people who elected you, you have a difficult vote tonight. I ask that council move to continue the appeal hearing in order to allow staff to prepare a resolution and associated findings to uphold the Planning Commission's decision and deny the project. The EIR has deficiencies identified by outside advisors. We know there are alternative no-fill plans. Staff has identified plans in 1996 and 2016, and the current owner suggested that 2016 plan. I, myself, always hope for a win-win outcome. Can we interrupt this current process and negotiate a way forward that is a no-fill alternative? It seems it would be mutually beneficial to arrive at that agreement. I implore the city to reach out and explore that possibility, or even consider establishing a community task force to work with the owner. Thank you, council and staff, for your hard work.
Thank you. Kurt Keest, Danielle Spando, and David Goodman. I saw him earlier, but I guess he left.
He might be on the phone later. He might call.
I'll try and call him later. Danielle Spando, followed by David Goodman and Cindy Abbott.
Hello, I'm Danielle Spandau. I moved to Pacifica in June. Unlike all these people who have been here for 20 years, I've only been here for a few months. I've been coming here, visiting almost every weekend since 2019, wanting to move here, loving this town, loving this coast side. The thought of what these guys want to do, these fraudsters, what they want to do with this quarry, filling it with this foreign soil, and I agree with you, what scares the heck out of me is we don't know what's in that soil. And to do that in our beautiful, beautiful coastline, and to destroy what we have come to love, and all of the history that is there, when there are clearly alternatives that many people have spoken about, and they know a lot more than I do, it just makes absolutely no sense to me. And I don't have a whole lot more to say about it than that, other than I'm new to this town, I love this town, I love my new house, and I don't want this to change, and I don't want all those trucks bringing in all that soil, all that foreign soil. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dave, we're going to have Kurt go first because his card was first. Thanks.
Thank you, city council members, for your hard work and your deliberations. Just to reinforce what you already know, yes, the quarry is private property, not city property, and the owner has a right to develop it, but within the guidelines and rules and laws and zoning when he bought it. He bought it at a distressed price because of the risks and limits to development, including the potentially expensive need to reclaim the quarry. But the owner told us at the June meeting that he had a chance meeting with Mr. Gil Martin, which they hatched a plan to reclaim the quarry with huge amounts of imported soil. In fact, by doing so, Bayland Soil Pacifica was then created to turn the expense of reclamation into, in fact, a tremendous business opportunity to actually make money with reclamation. Bayland Soil Pacifica is not the owner, but rather a created corporate entity with no experience in quarry reclamation, but instead a history of disposing of soil and a history of legal shenanigans, including corruption, that landed the parent of the company and the San Francisco Public Works Director in jail. Mr. Gil Martin is an opportunist who sees a chance to provide a soil disposal site, even if it is clean soil, and stands to make $50 to $100 million by turning the quarry into a landfill. Neither SMAR or the State Bureau of Mines says that they need 1 million cubic yards of soil. In fact, the only person who talks about 170,000 over and over again is their paid expert attorney. But what we need is an outside independent SMAR expert engineer. We've already got some here in the audience. Just say no to this proposal. It doesn't pass the smell test. It doesn't sound right, it doesn't seem like it's good for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kurt. Dave, followed by Cindy Abbott and Lori Goldberg.
Hi, David Goodman, Valamar resident. Wasn't really going to speak tonight, I was here for something else, going to try and actually talk with Kevin about something. And just listening to the attorney, you know, you talked about being kind. This gentleman actually stood up here and threatened us. He told us that we are obligated to do this. They put this stack of papers here. Are we going to really let these people do this? This is, they're not being kind to us. It's not what the people, I don't understand why this isn't, the other project went to a vote. Why isn't this being taken to a vote? Is this, they just found out another way just to slide something in? I just really don't understand. I'm really confused. The Planning Commission said no. You know, they, they are the experts. So they, you know, they got no from dad, so now they want to go to mom. And I just don't understand. That doesn't work anywhere else. So, yeah, I, I'm just confused. I have to get up at 4 o'clock tomorrow morning to go to work, but I just had to stay because this just doesn't make any sense to me. You know, we're supposed, the, the staff actually saying that we should approve this, that really, I believe it's the City of Pacifica's staff. It's the staff for the people. I just don't understand.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Cindy Abbott, Lori Goldberg, and... Cindy Abbott, Lori Goldberg, and then Dinah Verbi.
Over a period of many months, hundreds and hundreds of pages of documents and hours of public testimony, discussion, and deliberation, the Pacifica Planning Commission, appointed by you, denied approval of the proposed quarry reclamation plan by a 5-0 vote. Now it's your turn to do the same. The City of Pacifica came into being partly to prevent the beautiful hills and coast side from becoming a dump for San Bruno and other parts of the peninsula who wanted to create a landfill. The community said no then, and we need you to listen to the continued voice of the people and stand with us in saying that Pacifica is not a dump. When I moved to Pacifica 28 years ago, I found a place of strong community, community that respected the environment, fought hard to preserve open space, and was innovative. Pacifica Estate Beach, Lindemar, is a renowned case study in managed retreat and beach preservation. Our wastewater treatment plant restored wetlands. Of late, though, we've lost vision and innovation succumbing to the consideration of projects that serve only the purpose of generating tens of millions of dollars for project applicants with no equal benefits for us and the community. You began the meeting reading a land acknowledgement. Now is the time for you to uphold those statements and create a vision for the future that acknowledges the hurtful harms of the past. Step out of the archaic box of environmental degradation and development with righteous action that facilitates the return of the land to its rightful stewards, the Rama Tushaloni people, as part of the growing land-back movement recognized by the state of California. Engage in an innovative future that acknowledges the unique environment and history of the quarry. You have sound legal grounds to deny the permit and a moral obligation to future generations. Do the right thing, deny the appeal, deny the permit, be the leaders who finally write the course of history.
Thank you, Cindy. Lori Goldberg, Dinah Verbi, and Peter Loeb.
I'm really kind of upset because I don't like being bullied, and I feel like we're being bullied by Huli and his, whoever they are. I just don't think that's, we're talking about kumbaya and everything. That's not kumbaya. The quarry, someone mentioned the quarry is a special area, and it is. People come from other states, other countries, kids, parents, babies. People are using that quarry. It's nature, and they say nature is very important for our well-being. And here we want these people who are going to benefit, don't even live in Pacifica. I'm not even sure where Huli lives. I don't even know if he stays here or even buys anything here, and these, and these consultants or whoever he has. What do they have to do with Pacifica? They're going to ruin it, and then we're going to have to live with their making money and mess? And then I'm kind of wondering, like, have they bought off some of the people here in our city? I wouldn't be surprised. It's, it's just really, really sad that you do not listen to the people of Pacifica. The Planning Commission already voted 5 to nothing, and then I always hear about how dangerous these cliffs are. Well, Huli at one time wanted to build 2,500-square-foot bungalows up on the hills. Oh my God, 2,500 square feet? That is not a bungalow. And I haven't heard anything of how many people have actually been hurt or died on those hills? How many people die from falling in the, like, from sharks or whatever? I doubt there's that many falling off the cliff and killing themselves and whatever. And we haven't heard anything about that. And the Planning Commission said, "How dangerous are those? We haven't heard anything about it." This is a terrible plan. I don't like that you're being bullied. "Oh, you have to accept this." Why do we have to accept it? They don't even live here in Pacifica. What consequences do they have when we have to deal with dirt and traffic and everything else?
Thank you, Lori. Your time is up. Dinah Verbi, Peter Loeb, Cliff Lawrence.
Good evening, Dinah Verbi. There have been several misrepresentations or at least misstatements made tonight that I really feel have to be corrected, and for that reason alone, I believe you're going to have to continue the hearing tonight. There are way too many questions. Of course, it should be continued with directions to staff to come back with findings for denial of the project. The first mistake is the fact that the 2016 plan was abandoned because the owner lost the election. In fact, this owner of this property submitted another plan in 2017. It's, it's in the record tonight in your packet under public comments. It was for a very low or no imported fill project, and it was represented at that time that it complied with all aspects of SMRA. So that alone should give you pause and make you doubt what you're hearing from the applicants and their representatives tonight. Please look at that May 17 plan. The second area of misstatement or inaccuracy was whether or not this 874,000 plan was ever reviewed by DMR. It was not. We did document requests from the city and from DMR for all correspondence and communications. I scoured them, looking for that October 23 plan. It's not there. The only plans that were submitted were early 2023 and the July 2 letter from the applicant's attorney, which is in your packet tonight. So the plan they're asking you to approve, I don't believe was ever seen by DMR, and if it was, please ask staff and DMR to confirm that.
Thank you, Dinah. Your time is up. Peter Loeb, Cliff Lawrence, Ruby Pleasure.
Peter Loeb, thank you for your time. You have received two lengthy letters from an attorney representing CPUP, the Coalition of Pacificans for an updated plan. I'm a co-founder of that organization. I am not speaking for that organization. I'm just speaking as an individual, but that, the attorney's letters point out many ways in which essentially you should not proceed with, with the approval of the project. I also submitted a long letter in public comment listing a whole bunch of grounds for finding that the EIR is not adequate under SEQA. There's been numerous public comments, numerous materials submitted to the council supporting the idea that, that you have to deny this project, that approving it is, is a, will be, I'm afraid to say it, but it's, it's illegal. You, you have representatives from your Planning Commission here. I, I ask you to ask them why they voted 5-0 not to approve this project. It's, it's hundreds of thousands of cubic yards of waste soil being imported, tens of thousands of truck trips over many, many years. Is that really what you want your legacy to be? It would kill tourism to this town probably forever, what we would become known as Pacifica. Oh, that's the city that turned into a dump. Come on. You don't want that as your legacy. We don't want to put up the, the bronze plaque with your names on it or the Pacifica Dump.
Thank you, Peter.
Please.
Time's up. Cliff, Ruby Pleasure, Debra Nagel Burks.
Good evening, Cliff Lawrence here. A little puzzled what we're actually doing tonight. See, my understanding of an appeal is that you take the actions that have happened to that point, you examine them for error. But instead, we've gotten a new presentation tonight, surprisingly, not from the applicant, from our own staff. I'm sorry, but I take offense at this, that our own staff is working with the applicant to subvert our Planning Commission. And this is an end run on the Planning Commission. They're the people with the expertise. Why aren't you letting them speak to this? But no, you're going to end run them, take them out of the loop when you gave them the job. And you gave them the job because they had the expertise and the talent and the will to really look at this and down in the weeds, which you haven't been, you can't get to. And you certainly can't do it in one meeting when they've spent the better part of a year. While we're at it, the last time we met, the four-year thing got blown out of the box. We, we now know we're not talking four years, we're talking six or eight. Keep that in mind. And as for, yes, the threat, I love that. They've tried that on us once before. If that person, if that attorney has facts to sustain his remarks about this, then he should give us the facts or withdraw the statement, because I'm to hear with that. You have a hard job. I, I will do not minimize that, but you've got a job, and I expect you're going to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. Ruby Pleasure, Debra Nagel Burks, and Marge Davis.
Good evening. My name is Ruby Pleasure, and I have been a Pacifica resident for over 50 years. That kind of ages me, doesn't it? I am here because I'm very concerned about this latest quarry proposal, and I'm here to voice my very strong opposition to the project. For me, this is a health and safety issue. The number of polluting trucks, the ability to have access and regress from Pacifica with possible medical issues resulting from that, the effect of contaminated soil and rocks. Who is going to assure us and be responsible for cleaning up the pollution? How can we be assured that the material being dumped will not be seriously contaminated? It's my understanding that the Planning Commission has denied this project. Why is the council bringing it up again for consideration, especially in light of so much public opposition to this project, especially since I've actually come for the first time to a meeting? Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Debra Nagel Burks, Marge Davis, and Remi Tan, and that will be the last card. We will go to the phones after that.
Good evening. My name is Debra Nagel Burks. I am a 35-year resident of Pacifica. I am here to voice my strong opposition to the latest quarry proposal. This is a health and safety issue. The number of polluting trucks, the ability to have access and regress from Pacifica, the effect of the contaminated soil and rocks. Who will assure us and be responsible for cleaning up? How can we be assured that material being dumped will not be contaminated? Have you heard about super funds? Of course you have. Everyone in the USA has. Where are the funds for cleaning up this polluted site? Have you applied for the funds? Why are we not protected by the Coastal Commission? Where do you suggest we connect to? It's our understanding that the Planning Commission has denied this project. Why is the council bringing it up again for consideration, especially in light of so much opposition to this project? And by the way, that was less than 420 words, which is a three-minute oral exposition.
Thank you. Marge Davis, Remi Tan, and then Cherie Chan.
Good evening. I don't want to waste too much time saying hi, but hi, y'all, and thank you so much for what you do. So I was trying to think what I could do tonight that might be helpful, and I know you've heard a lot. I agreed with so much of what was said, particularly Cindy Abbott, Peter Loeb, Pete Shoemaker, who could have put it better? But I also had a really interesting conversation with a manager at DMR, and it kind of, it kind of chased the boogeyman out from under the bed that is the threat that they would take this to SMRA, or actually, it is, the State Mining and Geology Board, SMGB. And some of what I'm going to share with you were direct quotes, or almost direct quotes, but there's some paraphrasing, but the point was made that DMR is an oversight agency, it's not regulatory. The SMRA is a local law that gives the state review authority over certain things. SMRA is not prescriptive. There are many ways to reclaim this site, and in fact, a couple, as we all know, have already been approved. The state mining, well, for an appeal to qualify for review by SMGB, the denial must be related to SMRA. So your reasons for denial must be related to SMRA for it to be heard by the board. In the 14 years this person's worked for the DMR, he's familiar with one appeal that's been heard. Also, I think that this should be processed as a soil disposal inert material landfill, which involves other agencies from California State Department of Resources, CalRecycle to be specific. Quote from the Remi Moose and Mosley letter dated today in public comments, "CalRecycle oversees inert debris engineered fill operations and should be consulted." And I believe we should also be looking to our own landfill ordinance, because really, this is two things. And again, this is exchange I had with this person from DMR, that this project has an ultimate end use of one business and the reclamation plan. He referred to it as lumping multiple times.
Thank you, Mark. Your time's up. Remi, and then Cherie.
Hello, Remi Tan. I'm architect and resident of Pacific Manor and also on the Open Space Committee, but I'm actually speaking as a citizen of the city and a neighborhood member of Manor. This, this is a totally ridiculous proposal. I mean, 875,000 cubic yards. Each truck carries 10 cubic yards, so that's 87,500 trucks over four years is 60 trucks a day going down the hill at Highway 1. And the only way those trucks can navigate that highway safely is to drive in low gear and have engine brake, which is a very loud diesel noise that will reverberate through the valley 60 times a day for years for this length of the project. Plus, as the truck is in engine brake, it's spewing diesel pollution throughout the valley in, in Manor, and that's, that's very harmful particulate. I just read through the EIR, and it says nothing about those impacts. Plus, if any one of those trucks ever lost its brakes, there is no stopping the trucks. There is no runoff. They're going to overturn and probably kill somebody on that highway going down that steep, curvy hill. And, you know, just do the math, 87,000 trucks. There's going to be, some of those trucks are going to lose their brakes. It's just, you know, the law of averages. I mean, this is a totally ridiculous proposal. And, you know, if the goal is to raise a hotel that can look over the rim and get an ocean view, just allow the, the hoteler to put a parking lot and some conference rooms so they can build up the building so they can get the rooms above the, the rim of the thing. It's a much safer deal and, you know, allow more square footage of the hotel, much-needed conference space that we have in the city, and we have much better project for the City of Pacifica. Thank you.
Your time's up. Cherie.
Hi there. My name is Cherie Chan, San Pedro Avenue. Earlier tonight, Councilmember Christine Bowles introduced a letter from the Coastal Mission staff, Julian Honey, noting that the City of Pacifica Planning Department is applying an unapproved land use designation change to this property. I should just remind you that Pacifica doesn't have a legal 2040 local coastal plan yet. It hasn't been approved by the Coastal Commission. My son also asked for three brownies tonight, but that doesn't mean he gets it, but we do have brownies in the back, so help yourself. What is approved is the local coastal plan that we have in place right now, and that's what we're supposed to uphold. Your predecessor's called out the special nature of this quarry in the approved local coastal plan, which is the one that we're supposed to keep, that's on record. And it says, and I'll read it into the record, "The quarry is one of the few remaining large vacant sites suitable for commercial development in the coastal zone and in the city. Because of its location, the quarry's future is critical to the..." Because of its location, the quarry's future is critical to the coastal image of this city. The area is proposed as a special area to promote integrated planned and well-designed use of this site." And that was the point, and that's what we all envisioned, and that's what we need to do. Instead, MLK IV here is proposing to further erase and desecrate their land and override your commission and change the coastal image of our city into that of a dump. So I'm asking you again to do this hard work, and thank you for your service. Good night.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to the phones. Emily, how many people are on the phone?
There are not, there are 10 raised hands.
Okay, let's, can we stop the raised hands on the phone?
I can give a few minutes in case people haven't started raising their hands.
We'll give it five minutes, and then at five minutes, we'll cut off the phone calls. Okay, Emily, go ahead.
Okay. The first raised hand is for Betty Duran.
Go ahead, Betty.
Good evening, everyone. I actually thought I had a lowered hand, but here I go. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
I was thinking about the mess we're in. It's just, I'm befuddled as to how we get to this point. It is so clear that the community does not want this project. I think of what I've heard tonight, and it stays with me. They're concerned with health and safety. And they want to know, who does it benefit? My feeling is it should benefit the community. And I don't think that that's what it's going to do. It's a disaster waiting to happen. How do you mitigate something that everyone says will have a significant impact? There's no way to condition a project like that. It simply needs to go away and not be part of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
The next raised hand is for Gloria Stoffen.
Go ahead, Gloria.
Good evening, city council members and city staff. My name is Gloria Stoffen and a longtime resident of Pacifica. I would like to thank you for your services, and it's never easy in making major decisions that have become controversial and that directly affect the community. I urge you, as members of the council, to please think of how detrimental this quarry plan is. Four years. Now I'm hearing maybe even more years of big trucks with loads of toxic soil coming and going on Highway 1. And what are the effects on the environment, I ask, which I hope you're thinking of as well. I live in Rockaway, and I'm thinking of the traffic problem and what this will cause us all, going and coming south of Rockaway and north of Valimar. If you get stuck at that stop signal at Valimar, it can be a 15-minute wait just to cross the highway. Also, I thought that Pacifica is facing a sea level rise issue and that a plan for Coastal Commission is needed in addressing this. A book was written by Rosanna Zine, XIA, called California Against the Sea, Visions for Our Vanishing Coast.
30 seconds.
I urge you, I urge you to please not approve this quarry plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next raised hand is for Leo and/or Chris.
Go ahead, Leo or Chris, whoever it is.
Hello, this is Leo. I'm speaking, Pedro Point. I just want to chime in with the majority opinion here that we should uphold the hard work and analysis of the Planning Commission. They did a thorough job. They covered this subject in depth, and we should acknowledge that work. I also want to speak to the safety. You know, if the applicant wanted to provide a safer environment, they might consider improving the trails, putting a post and cable, putting some simple signers like we do at the beach, where let people know that people have drowned here or that have had, it's dangerous. You know, these are things that can help the community that are easy to do if someone cares enough to do it. On the other hand, I've been familiar with this project for a long time, and I know the applicant, at one time, one of the first things they were going to do was remove all the invasive pampas grass and plants that were competing with the local native plants and hindering wildlife. So I would like to see that happen. I don't know what happened to that good thought. You know, that's something, once again, that is directly in the power of the applicant. It was supposed to be done years ago. So on the issue of public vote, the applicant proposed a plan that had less fill.
30 seconds.
The reason that the plan was denied was not because it had less fill. It was because the community did not like the housing aspect of that plan, and as many other plans that have gone before it have failed for the same reason. So, you know, that doesn't preclude a plan with lesser impacts from happening. So I just urge, as was mentioned earlier, continue the meeting.
Thank you, Leo. Your time's up. Thank you.
Noting that five minutes have passed since we mentioned, and there are eight more commenters. The next commenter is Kimberly Williams.
Okay, so that last caller at the end of five minutes, what number are they? And that will be our last phone call.
The last raised hand is for Katie.
Okay, so Pete will be the last caller. Okay.
The next raised hand is for Kimberly Williams.
Go ahead, Kimberly.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Vado Lawson and council members. I'm Kimberly Williams, representing San Mateo County Chapter of Surf Rider Foundation. Surf Rider has serious concerns about the potential for hazardous waste and contaminated soil leaching into Calera Creek and in stormwater runoff, contaminating not just the project site, but also the creek shoreline and impacting water quality and recreation dependent on those resources, including impacts to human health and wildlife. Once any contamination is introduced, it isn't easily cleaned up, and cleanups are expensive. Negative impacts from toxic contamination could result in lost revenue from visitors serving businesses and lost recreation areas, reputational damage to the city, and damaging media coverage and social media. The traffic impacts mentioned are also a concern if this project is approved and could significantly affect visitor access to recreation in Pacifica. Finally, we find it very concerning that local indigenous voices and input haven't been made a priority during consideration of this project. Descendants of Native people should have a seat at the table when projects transgress on cultural resources, especially since Pacifica history has ignored, historically has ignored and excluded those voices. Pacifica has been working on equity and inclusion generally with several initiatives over the last few years, and this project should also model that commitment. Quarry restoration is a viable and attractive project for grant funding, and we wonder if that option was explored as an alternative to offering this project to commercial interest, that is, exploring a collaborative restoration and conservation project with land trust or other funding partners and stakeholders. Surf Rider stands with the Muchiatee Indigenous Land Trust opposing this project. We feel the potential consequences and long-term impacts to the creek shoreline and water quality are too great. We ask that you decline to approve this project and that you explore with stakeholders a more viable project collaboration of conservation-minded partners for a safer, more environmentally sound and publicly beneficial restoration project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
The next raised hand is for Stephen Gooddale.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, sorry.
Well, good evening. The other night, we were enjoying a nighttime snack, looking out over the sea at Rockaway. It was probably later than nine or so. I don't quite remember. But what I do remember is seeing a couple of wildly swinging flashlights as night hikers decided that coming down the quarry's southern cliff face was a good idea. We watched apprehensively, not quite sure what to do if we saw a person fall down the cliff and into the sea. We had 9/11 ready to call and breathed a huge sigh of relief when the lights made it to the base of the cliff. If you've spent any time in Rockaway, you know this happens all the time. But filling the inside of the quarry does nothing to protect the people that regularly stumble down that cliff. It's a red herring, a misdirection, a thousand dump truck-sized dirty trick pretending to be SMAR compliance, while in reality, it sets up the quarry for future development. The applicant even said so, teasing less dump trucks if they get the plan now for the whole's new building foundations would need. I've been listening this whole time, and I still don't understand why this is your problem now. But I do know that the Planning Commission denied it, and the people of Pacifica consistently and emphatically reject it. Please, our honorable city council of proud Pacificans, stop giving these lawyers, developers, and dump truckers the opportunity to muddy the waters, pile on weird threats, and stink up Pacifica. Put it to bed, reject us once and for all, and bury this appeal. Then we'll go have a big party on the beach. Thanks for your service.
Thank you. And Emily, hold on a second. For the people standing, it's really not fair to the people behind you. So if you want to stand, go to the back and stand there. Thank you. Emily?
The next raised hand is for the phone number ending in 9116.
Can you go ahead, 9116?
Thank you. My name is Dan Evenhouse. I'm a longtime Pacifica resident, 25 years. I guess relatively new compared with some of the people here tonight. I want to thank everybody who showed up today to encourage the council to reject the applicant's desire to engage in the project. I'm sort of at a loss also as to how we got to this point. I remember that we already voted not to have a development in the quarry. So how we got to this point, I'm not sure. But I would urge that the council pays attention to the overwhelming objection to this proposal. And I also, I would say, it's kind of unusual to have so much unanimity among Pacificans about anything. So I just have to say that. And thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you. Next caller.
The next raised hand is for Carlisle Anne Young.
Go ahead.
Couldn't find the unmute. Sorry about that. Okay, well, I don't live in Pacifica. I live in Moss Beach. And the reason I'm interested in this is because I've lived on the coast south of Lindemar. It's only seven miles. But we have a windy road, and it's often backed up with a lot of tourist traffic. And getting through Pacifica can be quite troublesome when it's a nice sunny day. But imagine trying to get to an appointment or something when there's trucks full of soil. Anyway, I just would like to say that I do appreciate the need to reclaim the quarry, and I feel the city council should not blindly accept soil of unknown origin or from an unknown destination in advance. Because of the amount of soil to be delivered and the increased amount of traffic that is coming from who knows where, it's really important to find out where it's going to be coming from. There's a military base in Moss Beach, and I'm worried that they're going to try to bring the soil through the tunnel. If they, it's already been approved for a housing project, and they might want to try to import the soil that's going to be removed from that project and bring the toxic soil down to the quarry through the tunnel. And there's often accidents on Highway 1 during the weekend and on the weekdays. The greater distance of hauled materials could make a difference, too. They bring soil from Hunter's Point, which is also some other toxic site of military base soil. So I don't know why they ruled out bringing it from Santa Clara, but there's, you know, there's military bases in Alameda and up in Marin. There could be anywhere, but they all have, in the past, dumped their toxic.
Thank you, Sid. Your time is up. Next.
The next raised hand is for Sam Casillas.
Go ahead, Sam.
Hi, city council. You know, I do realize that this is a tough one for you guys. You know, you've been wanting to develop the quarry for a long time, but we need to be a lot more responsible with this one. One thing is the applicant keeps misrepresenting our comments on purpose. Our comments are not to reduce the fill, and they're manipulating our comments. The no fill is the only option. This will not be a stable site. All erosion data shows that the western slope will fail, and all that contaminated soil will go right into the ocean. With coastal erosion the way it is right now, the plan is the same as dumping soil right into the ocean. Fact is, the city is in charge of SEQA and the coastal act review upfront, not SMARMA. And that cannot be taken away from you. So you can reject this on the EIR itself, and you don't have to listen to the bullshit that they're giving you on. Sorry, didn't mean to say that. But also, you know, we need to ask, who is our staff working for right now? Because they're not representing the city's best interests. And, you know, if they want to go and work for the applicant, then they should. But I can't believe what they're suggesting here when all of us concede that this is not allowable under SEQA. You know, then you have these criminals. They dare to quote the arc of justice quote. This is beyond bizarre. We're being gaslit here. Change is coming, and that change is to rid ourselves of profiteers who prey on communities like ours. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam. Next caller.
The next raised hand is for Ann.
Hi, my name is Ann Suma. I'm a homeowner and a young parent in Valimar. And I just wanted to say thank you to the zoning committee for your thoughtfulness and how thorough that you have been. I attended with my husband and my young son to the meetings. We stayed late. We've gone home, put him to bed, jumped on Zoom, and that's how I'm commenting now. And I just wanted to say, it terrifies me. I bought a home. I felt we fell in love with Pacifica for the views, for the community, for the nature, for starting our family and staying here. And the thought that my son could be going to Valimar and just inhaling for, ooh, I don't know, the entire time that he's there as a teacher, I'm scared for all of the students of Valimar, but not just Valimar, any child who's possibly riding their bike to school. It's very difficult for any truck to stop. We've seen accidents on Highway 1. I just can't, I can't even fathom or imagine. Does the project stop when one pedestrian gets hit at that intersection? That intersection's very scary to cross right now. The path is lovely. Like, this is our home. This is the way that we walk to the beach. It's devastating to hear that it's just going to become a landfill for who knows how many years. And I just wanted to thank other residents of Pacifica for speaking up and for being so eloquent with your thoughts and also just with the research. I really value and appreciate living here, and I want to continue living here, and I want it to be a safe and safe place to raise the rest of my family and not be so scared about what the future could be at the end of my street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Next caller.
The next raised hand is for Summer Lee.
Go ahead, Summer.
Hi, Summer Lee. Thank you, council, always. I'm so proud to be a Pacifican tonight and proud of this community for refusing to be gaslit by the owner and soil dumping company and their reps, and now our own city staff. Please ask if the applicant has ever done a reclamation. The applicant at the first hearing admitted they've never done one. They are a soil hauling and dumping company, and because of that, what you approved tonight as a reclamation does not meet the primary goal of reclamation, nor does it have the correct procedures, documents, and even agency approvals for a landfill. I also want you to ask yourselves, how does Pacifica benefit from this? And can you please ask staff why they didn't do a tribal consultation? And when they answer, And when they answer, is that going to feel right to you? Please ask about our landfill ordinance. Please ask, would the city realize any payments from the applicant to allow use of the same soil for quote-unquote "reclamation" rather than disposing it at a regulated facility? You have legal liability from both the community but also the applicant. You can look to a failed indemnity agreement and a current Pacifica lawsuit and understand that there is indeed no less liability by approving this except for alienating your own planning commission and having a dump name after you. I'm asking tonight, can you approve this project and say it is legally defensible? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Summer. Next caller?
The last raised hand is for Katie.
Okay, go ahead, caller, please.
Thank you for your time. I very much echo and appreciate the comments that have been spoken. I want to recall that this meeting started with talk of all your wonderful, and your now adult kids' wonderful memories of the planfest for over 40 years. Now, I'm a parent of a kindergartner and a third grader at Valamar and I can't help to think what kind of memories my kids are going to be talking about in 40 years and what future I'm handing them if this project goes forward. We used the trail through the quarry to get on our bikes to school, to Valamar School. There's a regular group of kids and parents and middle schoolers that use this trail, which is continuing to be stated as temporarily closed for periods of time in the plan. I'm not sure where all those acres are supposed to go. Highway One is not a safe alternative, but there's not really another option, so I really want the safety impact to this critical trail to be considered for those four years. Additionally, as we stated, the dust concerns with the school right there, people trying to get through the trail during construction, along with all the other comments I've been stated tonight. I appreciate your time considering them, but please, please think of the impact on our kids who will be the ones who will have to have this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no more public comment, would everyone like a break? Get up?
We still have rebuttals.
Sorry, I do know that. I just.
And then after the rebuttals, you'd be a good.
Okay, we'll do the rebuttals first then. So, Dan?
I wanted to ask one question of Dan.
After?
Oh, before his rebuttal, so he can't answer me?
After the rebuttal.
Okay, I don't understand.
Go ahead.
I'm not allowed to ask you right now.
The applicant represents themselves. Staff and city council represent the people. 68% of the people voted against this project when the developer was paying $100 per voter in 2016. I'm going to read from the Marin Scope, January 17, 2000. Eventually, the Spanish governor of California, Pablo de Sol, demanded an explanation of what was happening to the Indians since the Mission de la Rua's death rate was so much higher than any other mission in California. The report given by Father Ramon Abella gave three reasons: almost universal syphilis, extreme mortality of the infants and children, and deprivation of the Indians' natural habitat. There was a 40% annual death rate compounded by a large number too sick to work. There's two contemporary counts of natives being branded with crosses on their forehead in Pacifica by a Russian whaler and a Quaker Society of Friends missionary from Minnesota. No one was a bigger slaver than the Dutch West Indies, East Indies Company. There's numerous contemporary accounts of the Spanish selling slaves in Europe also. Catholic Charities has 5,000 sets of Native American remains that have never been DNA-tested. Confidentially, when I talk to them, they say, what we think is going to happen is we're going to see a brief group of people in Europe who were slaved out of San Francisco and the Bay Area. They were slaved right here. They were enslaved mining limestone for the, by the Spanish shoulders for Mission de la Rua and for the Spanish Presidio. This is your legacy. Half of you are here for 50 more days. 20 years from now, when you're walking around, people are going to say, yeah, I don't care what the good you did, what good things you did, you know? I remember your horrible decision on the quarry. People were slaved here. 40% of the Native Americans died per year. Per se, Tamikta were the biggest donors to the Catholic commissions. They were the first villages taken. It's documented by the San Mateo County Historical Society in their 1973 reports. This is your legacy. 20 years from now, people are going to come to you and say, you'll be at Safeway, and they'll go, oh, I remember that horrible decision you made on the quarry. This is your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next appellant, please.
If there are questions for the appellant.
Each time?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, so now Christine?
Now Christine can ask her question of the first appellant.
Yeah.
Oh, yay.
I have a question of staff when she's done.
Okay.
So you gave us some documents here, including an email from then-planning director Christian Murdock from April 22 of this year.
That's correct.
And this is to Kelly Matheson of the Department of Conservation. I'm just, I just want to read it. It says, "Hi, Kelly. Nice speaking with you this afternoon. Please find attached the 2013 letter I referenced in which it says the mine was deemed stable with no identified public health and safety issues and also no health and safety concerns noted." And then, "It would be good to know more about the basis of these statements if possible," blah, blah, blah. I don't see that letter attached. Is that something that?
We don't have the letter. I'm assuming your city staff has it.
Okay. City staff, have you, have you seen this correspondence?
Yes, I have the letter open right now.
Okay. Could you read that to us?
It's a total of six pages.
Oh, uh-huh.
Councilmember Bowles, are you requesting that we read six pages of a letter?
Well, not necessarily. Well, I, I mean, I want to understand if it's deemed, if the mine is deemed, if the Department of Conservation is saying that the mine is deemed stable with no identified public health and safety issues, I think that's material to what we're talking about tonight.
I'm a little confused about who wrote the letter to whom, because it seems like former planning director Murdoch was communicating with somebody from the California Department of Conservation.
Right.
Over this letter that he's referencing.
Right.
That's correct.
So maybe Stephanie can tell us who the letter is from and to, to start with.
Date.
And one idea would be, they could, you know, look through the letter, find the salient parts, and we could continue on while they're, they're looking for that.
It's going to take a while for staff to go through six pages and then condense it and then.
Well, can you just tell us who, who the letter is to and from, to start with?
It's not a letter. It's a State Mining and Geology Board Executive Officer's Report dated for meeting date June 13, 2013.
Okay. Okay, well, we can go ahead and I'd like to come back to that. Thanks.
Great. So are there any other questions for this appellant?
Not at this time.
I do have a question for staff based on the.
Okay, but we can let the, oh, the appellant is gone.
He's got it anyway.
Never mind.
Well, my question is more for you at this point. By the way, if I'm still at Safeway 20 years from now, I may or may not be questioning my choices.
It may be better to wait for questions for staff after we've finished public comment, unless, unless it's related to.
It's related specifically to this appellant's appeal.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. There's a statement made, "Pacifica could likely bar individuals and companies solely because San Francisco has already barred them." I'd like a response to that, please.
We, we do not have a process in place for barring. We could, we could institute one, but that is a very rigorous process, so we do not have a process in place to do that. And my understanding is that in San Francisco, they, that he went through that process and it was determined that he was barred from engaging in any activity with the city of San Francisco. So that, that is how we would design ours if we had one in place, but we don't.
Okay, thank you.
May I respond to that, please? Is it okay? As the applicant?
City attorney?
In the accused?
You have a rebuttal period and you can respond at that point. Oh, sorry. Okay.
Sorry, Mayor.
And, so do we want to move on and come back to that, Christine?
Um, sir, we can hear the, the other appellants.
Okay, so let's hear the other appellant now. You have three minutes.
I'll just address that last comment quickly. I'm William Joseph Gil Martin IV. I'm not William Joseph Gil Martin III. I'm a 100% owner of Bayland Soil Pacifica LLC, and I'm specifically not debarred from doing business with the city and county of San Francisco. In fact, I do millions of dollars of work with that city every single year. Thank you.
Uh.
Mayor, members of the city council.
Please, no comments.
Mayor, members of the city council, I'm continuing with our rebuttal. Look, we understand the community doesn't like this reclamation plan. We have attempted for the past few years to try to address their comments, whether through reducing the amount of fill as part of the proposed project and also agreeing to explore a reduced fill alternative that city staff identified in its own CEQA document, all in the spirit of trying to address these comments. We have also addressed every single comment and incorporated measures into the reclamation plan to address those comments so that there are no toxic, toxic substances being disposed of here. This is not a toxic landfill. This is reclamation and all my client is asking to do is to reclaim the property based on what the law says. And I understand that the public thinks this is a Trojan horse for development. It is not. It is reclamation that has been required for 30 years and unfortunately, nobody's been able to do it because it's a chicken and an egg problem in this community with respect to trying to implement reclamation that state law requires. So we respectfully request that you consider this project for you as a de novo review, which is what your law requires, and act on this project and approve it, if you, if you would, in furtherance of what the law requires. Thank you.
Can I ask a question of them?
Yes, you can ask questions now. Okay.
Yeah, I have a question for, for the appellant who just spoke. I'm just curious, when and why did you add a development pad to the project?
So we didn't add a development pad to the project. I want to give you a history here.
Okay.
There is a 1983 Rockaway Beach specific plan. There was a redevelopment project. At that time, that plan defined proposed land uses. Those proposed land uses have been carried forward in your 1985 general plan and in each subsequent general plan update. And if you read your 2040 general plan, it continues to reflect those land uses. So what we did in the context of this reclamation plan was to identify what is the final use. Reclamation under SMARMA is required to be adaptable to the end use. We looked at your general plan and Mr. Stinson's EIR described what the land uses were contemplated in the general plan. We established what the proposed area was for development based on the figure in the general plan that identifies land uses within that area. What we then did, because reclamation on this site is determined based on the topography, based on the elevations, based on the existing contours of that property, we did two things. We established what is reclamation based on the ultimate end use, based on your general plan, but we knew in this community, we have this ongoing chicken and an egg problem, which is, nobody wants development on this site. So we based the initial reclamation plan in 2022, actually in 2020, actually, yeah, 2020. We revised it in 2022 and then again in 2023. We looked at what is the worst-case condition based on open space? No development, even though your general plan says a mix of land uses for that.
Thank you so much.
That's how we came up with that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
It's going off the chart because it's a quick reference point and it's showing no flat building pads created for the October 23.
Simple question.
Similar question.
So the revised reclamation plan dated September 1, 2023, which was submitted as a full package in October 2023 with all of the grading plans and all of the engineering plans, was based on open space. No flat pads in the center of the quarry. When we looked at trying to further reduce the amount of imported fill, the only, you have to fill the quarry with something. It's either dirt or some area of development, so we looked at that.
I think you answered it, that it's predicated on open space.
Correct.
Thank you. I do have a couple more questions.
Go ahead, please.
If I can proceed.
Go for it.
There are actually a couple of questions for Paul Uli, if I may.
Okay. Paul?
And in response to the comments made by Mr. Gil Martin IV, I have issues with my own father, so I can commiserate to a point, although these stakes are outside my range. The community clearly has a sense of your business partners, including Mr. Zentner, which wasn't even brought up tonight, but I have more of a sense of you. And, you know, I'm going to be making some comments later about some of the things I've been perceiving as a community member before I was on council and what I'd like to see in terms of my community hopefully coming together in a positive way at some point. I have a technical question for you, but I'd like to frame an understanding of you before I go there, and I mean this sincerely, if you would indulge me. I understand you were actually knighted in the Netherlands?
Yeah, I actually was, yeah. The king actually knighted me, so that's correct. For the work that I did for the Netherlands and the United States to promote a number of things for both countries and collaboration between both countries. It's quite rare, actually.
Is that all you want to say on that subject before I go on to the technical question or do you want to elaborate?
No, I don't really need to elaborate on it. I mean, I think people can research what it takes to be knighted. It's quite difficult. You don't get knighted on your own. It's because lots of people recommend you. And, you know, the allegations of me being a criminal, I can assure you that criminals don't generally get knighted. And also, as a Dutch council, the US Department of, what is it, the US State Department did a complete background check and they don't give people immunity cards that are criminals. So the fact that all these allegations are just being thrown out, you know, you can't really fight against that if people want to say stuff. I mean, it's a free country.
Well, again, I can commiserate with the baggage of one's father on the one hand, but on the other hand, I want to make sure that you are understood independently of some of the people who lately have a perception surrounding them. My technical question for you alludes to what I was beginning with. Why have you not done the 1998 plan? When I talked to the Division of Mining Reclamation, the two things they made very clear to me is that it's up to Pacifica at the end of the day what our land use is, but also, and they reiterated it, again, three is kind of a magic number. We have a plan in our hand, they have a plan in their hand, they feel perfectly comfortable implementing tomorrow. You have a plan in your hand because a council, not us, signed off on that 1998 reclamation plan. CEQA done, apparently still needs to go to the Coastal Commission, but it seems like that's low-hanging fruit to not have this going on right now. I'm wondering why.
Yeah, so the answer there is, is that every single consultant that I asked for advice on said that the 1996 plan or 1998 plan is a nonstarter with the Coastal Commission because they would not allow the hillside to. because they would not allow the hillside to be, I don't know the technical term, but to be blown up. Because what needs to happen is, you know, what I was going to say in my speech, I mean, the other applicant showed hundreds and hundreds of thousands of cubic yards that were taken out of the quarry. And, you know, if you look at the site, it's huge. Just to put six inches of topsoil over the entire site is almost already 70,000 yards of soil, if I did my math correctly. And so it's a very, very large site. And so in order to fill that somehow, either you need to bring the hill down and level it off, or you need to bring it back up, right? And if you go look at the 1996 plan, it's about a million cubic yards of dirt that gets moved. The difference being is that the hill's being torn down and instead of it being brought in. And I was told that it's an absolute nonstarter with the Coastal Commission, and maybe your expert here can maybe comment on that independently. We also have our expert here that can comment the same, that works with, you know, WRA works with the Coastal Commission all the time. They say, Paul, you're not going to get that approved. So, yeah, I would have much rather not be subjected and subjected by my team here to this evening. And, you know, for me, it's, shoot, it's like 1:30 in the morning. So I'd rather be in bed at this point. So, you know, I don't think it's a doable plan. And I have to trust my consultants. I don't know that myself, but every single consultant tells me that the Coastal Commission is going to deny this flat-out period.
Okay, thank you.
Christine?
I'd like to talk to you too, Paul, for a second, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
And I want to thank you for being willing to talk with me before this meeting, too. And just for the public, and maybe you can affirm, I mean, what I heard from you is that you really want to do the right thing, right? In terms of the environment, in terms of the community, in terms of the tribal issues and allowing space for those conversations to happen. I'm having trouble with this particular reclamation plan and how that reconciles it. But, and sorry, I want to answer also one question from the public. The vote of the people is only about housing, right? So the reclamation plan, any commercial development, doesn't need to go to the vote of the people. And I reached out to you because my concern in where we are in this process, obviously, the community is very upset. And you also said that you wanted to build affordable housing and housing, which will take this partnership with the community to come to that point. So I'm, can you just affirm that those are indeed your goals for this site in the long run, beyond the reclamation?
Yeah, so like I said to you when we talked over the phone, my initial intention was not to just create open space, right? But I proposed a plan that developed only 10%, less than 10% of the entire 87-acre site and only had, at the time, I think, 206 apartments and 12 single-family units, right? So, and then hotel use. So it was extremely, extremely light development. And the community, you know, made it very clear that they did not even want 10% development. So forget the reclamation or whatever. We're just talking about that level of development. And they did not want that. So I think that was a very environmentally friendly plan. It would have put good wetlands in place. Right now, the wetlands are not very good. And it would have created lots of open space for people to use and all the things that you just mentioned. And people voted down and went through the same extremes that I heard tonight, where they're just crossing the line between what is actually accurate and what isn't accurate. They were saying that I was going to build army barracks while we submitted 3D renderings and a complete 3D model showing what this was going to look like. And yet, they were pasting army barracks all over my website. So coming from that history, I think as a property owner, I believe the only reasonable alternative that I have is to comply with state law and reclaim it. And in talking to, and I think that also affirms me wanting to ultimately do the right thing, even though people will probably try to twist my words to the alternative. Because if you look at Adam here that specializes in this area, I ask him, well, how many times do you have somebody that actually opposes reclamation? And, you know, 99% of his cases are people that are not willing to do the reclamation because it's expensive and costly. And in the last 10 years I've been with this, it's literally, you know, spent millions of dollars to try to get to this point. And I feel that, you know, I'm not going to give up. I mean, I want this thing to be left in a state that is better than where I found it. And I think that, under the law, I need to reclaim it, so I'm going to do that. And I want to give a quote from one of the attorneys from the Coastal Commission I talked to, who told me, and I said to some of you already, "In order to make amulets, you have to break eggs." That was her quote. And she was a very environmentally, you know, in tune individual. And even she realized that we cannot have her cake and he eat it too. And something needs to be done there, and I'm mandated to do it. So very long-winded answer. Short summary is, yes, I'm committed to it, and I have a track record of the developments that I did do in the unlikely event that a development would happen here. But if we were to do a development, I have a track record of doing those responsibly and well and not trying to get the bottom of the can. I've done it here, and I've done it in Europe.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. And if I can follow up with a question, I, reviewing the Zentner report, and this is from May 2017, the reclamation plan. And as Dinah Verby mentioned, this is after the vote failed. So I'd love to hear from you a little bit more about that and what you were trying to do at that time. And I really appreciate at the beginning of this, the summary that talks about the design and the goals of the design, you know, to create safe slopes. This one in particular, minimize grading to the maximum extent practical, which reduces the potential impacts and also limits costs. So at this point, I think you were looking to pay, right, someone to reclaim the site. And the plan, and I know it wasn't fully designed and engineered or reviewed by SMARA, but the goal at the time was, it says 108 cubic yards of fill, mostly in the quarry floor. It also talks about not working on the limestone faces, which I'll get to in more questions, a little bit technically. But can you tell us a little bit more about this? Because this seems like the direction that we would all prefer. And is it possible?
You know, and I would prefer as well, right? I mean, because if you look at from a property owner perspective and purely look at the math, I mean, these claims that I would be making $50 million or $100 million on filling this site. I mean, if you look at the requirements of the things that we consented to with the city, I was looking at it and I said, man, you know, I'm like one of those frogs that is sitting in the water and they keep on heating up the temperature, and I don't realize I'm boiling to death, you know? I mean, there's millions and millions of dollars' worth of commitment that are being made there. So it's what's before you and what was negotiated. And I was actually taken back by when I saw it all on paper again because you agreed to little things one at a time. And so for me, time, I'm not looking to make money on this reclamation. At 500,000 yards being put in, even that, I'm not going to make money on that. Maybe a truck hauler will make money on it, but I'm not going to make money on it. The only way I'm ever going to realize any profit from this site would be if I were to be able to develop, right? That's the only way. And so the quicker I can do that, just if you look at, you know, compounding interest, just because we paid cash for it, we still have an internal rate of return on our investment. And it's been compounding for 10 years of the money we put in, plus all the professional fees. If I now have another five years of reclamation, I mean, the likelihood of that being a profitable development, even if I get a few apartments approved, is very, very small. So it'd be in my best interest to reduce that reclamation. The way you reduce that is by putting less fill in. So forget about the, you know, desire of not having trucks, purely from a financial, and I'm being depicted as a greedy Gonzalez here. So assume that I'm the greedy, bad, baby Trump that only wants money. Let's assume that for a minute. Then, if I would act like him, I would want to have less fill rather than more fill because then I actually get to the thing that I can make money on. I don't make money on reclamation. So there's your answer. I would like to do that. The consultants here can tell me that, you know, with all the new requirements and everything that's coming in, with the Coastal Commission looking at it, I mean, you have, again, you have a certain amount of space, and you have this hill going up like 120-some feet. And in order to do that right, you can only, you know, stop filling in so much. And then you can, you know, get some construction on top of that, which will take care of part of it. But you cannot bring it all the way down to 100. If it would be feasible in a project, great. And I think that's maybe things that people want to look at. But for me, I have a hard time believing that, again, that's why I brought my little prop, is there's been this much work done on it by people that are smarter than I am. They could have made mistakes. Would they really have made a mistake that huge that you go from 800 to 500 to 100,000? I have a hard time believing that that's actually possible. And I'm relying on my team to advise me on that.
Yeah, I guess where I see a potential conflict of interest is that, I mean, Bayland Soil is the one who hired the civil engineer. I heard that at a planning commission meeting, as, you know. And so what were the directions given to them? Because it's obviously in their interest if they're taking money for each load, right? And so, I don't know, I have a degree of questioning of whether all that fill is really required or if this is a way to make money. I mean, one of these other plans also only lasted two years, you know, for the work. So to draw it out, but again, for them, it benefits them, right? Because the soil can come from multiple sites over more time.
Well, that's correct. I think you're correct in that they would make more money with more fill. I doubt, too, that they still make money at 500. At least, that's what I'm told. But again, I'm not a truck hauler. But assume that is correct. Again, I think that's why the city staff negotiated with our team to say, yeah, you approved this 500-some thousand yards. Then let's go and look at something very specific that we're going to put there with community input and then decide how much fill we actually need. And they allowed for up to four years to figure that out, right? And if we can't figure it out in those four years, yeah, well, then, you know, we're going to do what the state law requires us to do. So I think that was built into this approval that is being asked of the council tonight. And it'll give that opportunity simply also because, you know, your yes vote today, you know, will stretch out, I think, probably six to nine months with SEQA and then with the Coastal Commission. And then, say, we get approval by then, you know, just to mobilize and practice it, you know, it'll be another six to nine months. So before we haul in one truck, I think we're probably 18 to 24 months from today. So if the city council instructs the planning commission and the staff to diligently work on a specific plan, and we provide the resources like we've promised to bring in the consultants that you decide to hire, not me, to go ahead and do this in a timely fashion and put a critical path together with these people, this is entirely doable. I mean, you're an MIT-educated architect. You know what project management is like. You know, you can build a skyscraper in 18 months, you know? And so you certainly can get community engagement and get a specific plan designed if all the people are held accountable to specific dates and times, and the resources are available to do that. And we have agreed to provide the resources. It's up to the city and its team to put together a critical path to make that happen. And then, if you can come up with 100,000 yards, I would thank you for that because that means that we can get going to development quicker, and I can get some of my money out, which has been sitting here for 10 years. And I can get a nice project there for everybody involved. And if it cannot happen, then I just need to comply with state law.
Mary?
Does anyone else have questions? Because I was gonna, I kind of want to hear from our planning commission, so.
Definitely.
I mean, I can wait, but I just wanted to put that in.
Let's just find out if there are any more questions for the appellant. And if there aren't, then we can excuse the appellant.
Sorry. I have a question. You said that you have an expert that knows about dealing with Coastal Commission.
Yeah.
And this plan that from 2017, and you said it wouldn't pass?
Yes, please speak on behalf of that.
Can you explain that? That's my question.
Mayor, commissioners, thank you for having me. Jeff Smick with WRA Environmental Consultants. I'm not super familiar with the 2017 plan because I've come on to the project after that, but I think we were talking about the 1996-98 plan and its approvability by the Coastal Commission earlier. A million cubic yards is a lot of material we've been talking about bringing in. Many hundreds of thousands of cubic yards, that's even more. I think we need to understand the scale of this project. It's many years of dynamite crushing rock. It's a whole quarry project in and of itself. And for the Coastal Commission to approve that is a pretty, pretty long shot. You're really bringing down an entire mountain. And the viewscape is a big deal of the coast. The viewscape on the coast is a big, important issue for the Coastal Commission, and that in and of itself is probably a nonstarter.
Are you of the mind that bringing in 874,000 cubic yards would be more? Something that the Coastal Commission would be in favor of?
It's something we've been talking to them about. You know, we submitted permits to them a few years ago and have been going back and forth. They haven't said no. They haven't said yes.
Can you give us an idea of their major concerns and feedback to you to date?
Yeah, their comments have been around biological resources. Esha, we've been talking about, environmentally sensitive habitat areas. Those have been areas of questions for them, where the wetlands are going to be placed. They haven't specifically talked about truck trips, but they have asked about reducing the size of the footprint. The footprint of the fill comes down where it's near the creek. There are some wetlands located there that are going to be impacted, so they've been asking if it can be pushed back into the hillside, which would reduce impacts to wetlands and reduce the footprint, which could reduce the amount of fill. Those are some of the issues.
I have a couple of questions.
Good.
Have you done reclamation work for a quarry in the coastal zone?
I personally have not.
And actually, that question is for anybody in the team. If they've done reclamation work for a quarry in the coastal zone in California.
Microphone, please.
You need to be speaking to the mic. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Yes, we've approved reclamation plans in the coastal zone. You're in a unique situation, though, because the quarry's outside of, I think, your local coastal development permitting authority.
Yes, it is.
And so those don't actually have to go to Coastal Commission. There's an opportunity for them to review them. But here... Um, there's an opportunity for them to review them, but here, since you don't have the authority to issue the local coastal development permit on behalf of the Coastal Commission, it's a different process.
So you're saying that the Coastal Commission does not have authority, that DMR has the authority? Is that correct?
To approve the reclamation plan, that's correct.
But the Coastal.
No, I'm sorry, I misspoke. DMR doesn't have any authority to approve a reclamation plan. Division of Mine Reclamation is, is, uh, one of the bodies of the Department of Conservation. State Mining and Geology Board is a separate body. DMR provides an advisory role, for the most part. They review, comment on reclamation plans, they can take over some enforcement obligations at certain times, and when the State Mining and Geology Board is lead agency, DMR acts on behalf as their enforcement arm. So there's been a lot of confusion of the terms. The State Mining and Geology Board is the one that has appellate authority, uh, over reclamation plans, though, not DMR.
And the Coastal Commission, you're saying, has no jurisdiction whatsoever? They don't have to approve any sort of biologic plans, ESHA, anything to do with?
They have to approve a coastal development permit. They do not approve their rec plan. Separate entitlements.
Right. Okay, that's what I wanted to double-check on.
Yeah.
Um, so, I did want to, um, make a, actually, a follow-on to a statement that was made about things the Coastal Commission, I think you were the one who said it, cares about, and I think, um, you were using the term, a different term, but I've heard the term many times, view shed. Uh, it's a very big concern, um, and, and biologic concerns and ESHA and wetlands are also very large concerns for the Coastal Commission. An increasing area of interest and concern for the Coastal Commission is environmental justice. So my question is, have any of the people on the team worked in an environment where environmental justice was a factor in the way the plan was put together? Number one. And number two, what form of tribal consultation did you independently do as you prepared this plan?
Thank you for asking that.
Yeah, I mean, I can talk about that, that's, it's going to be an apples-to-oranges comparison. We do a lot of work in disadvantaged communities, communities identified by AB 617. They all have their unique challenges facing them, and quarry operations, um, are actually, believe it or not, maybe not viewed favorably by the community, but they're viewed favorably from a emissions reduction standpoint, and, and this is a unique situation here, there's no more mining being done.
Yeah, I would say in a lot, in an active mine site, I could follow that, but one that's not been.
That's why I'm saying it's apples-and-oranges comparison here. We, it really comes down to, we have an obligation to reclaim the site. They've set forth a, a reclamation plan to you that complies with the law. You know, there's one that's existing from 96, Coastal Commission never approved a CDP for it. We're coming to you with this current application. Your question about tribal consultation.
Yes, that's my question.
Yeah. Um, tribes, in my understanding, they prefer a government-to-government approach, especially when dealing with mining operators. We've done a lot of tribal consultation for, for programs across the state. I've never worked in the city of Pacifica, in the tribes that are culturally affiliated with this area. They're not a monolith, everybody is different. In my personal experience, which you asked, tribes prefer a government-to-government approach, and so that we respect that, and we let the counties and the cities handle that.
So, so you haven't? Thank you.
Can I ask you one more question?
Yeah, sure.
Um, so you, you said you have experience in reclamation and working with SMARA. Do you also have experience in landfill projects?
Yeah, they're quite common in, in quarry sites, um, across the state, across the bay. Over at Dumbarton, they're actually recreating a mountainside that was mined down, uh, turning it into a park. That's a local example. Um, happens a lot down in Southern California, there's a need for clean fill deposits, it's not out of the norm at all. Um, and we've got a lot of experience in working on those projects.
So, at, at what point would this project ever be classified more as a dump in terms of the other agencies?
Never.
Like Cal Recycle, some people mentioned.
Never. It's used solely for reclamation purposes, highly regulated material that comes onto the site, that's tested, it's clean, it's not a dump.
It's, um, but it's.
Pejoratively, it's been called tonight.
I'm still trying, and, so it's class three soil, right? So it, some toxins are allowed, um, they're not all naturally occurring necessarily, looking at the list that's in the, the EIR. So, just talking about Ox Mountain, they, they also accept class three soils, but then they are reviewed by Cal Recycle, and, and there's other, there's other review of the work that's going in, and so, I'm.
I can't speak to Ox Mountain. I can speak to, to this project, we've got experts on this project, and Billy can speak to that.
Okay.
The testing requirements stipulated in the soil management plan require that the material received on-site meets residential reuse values as established by the Department in Toxic Substance Control, and, uh, also match the equal, uh, or what's, what's normally allowed for in the San Francisco Bay area. And so if you review the specific constituents provided in the tests, you'll see that there are tests for CAM 17, SVOCs, VOCs, PCBs, PAH, and the list goes on, and all of the testing requirements require that the material received on-site meet those requirements.
Follow-up question.
Can I follow up with you with that?
Sure.
So I appreciate that. What I'm concerned about is like nutrients in the soil, so if you're going to bring soil in, it's going to be dead soil, and then you're going to plant 123 trees, we want to make sure that they're going to actually grow, right? And so, can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Matt, you want to talk about the vegetation? Oh, no, yeah, there you go.
So I, I've done a lot of restoration work, and the nice thing about native plants in California is they actually don't need a lot of nutrients. Where you put nutrients in the soil and the weeds come. And so, uh, we've gone to specifying, limited to no fertilizers, for example, when we're doing, uh, restoration projects, and I've done test plots for mine reclamation before, and we've tested, uh, plots with and without compost, for example. The ones with compost, lots of weeds come in, and the native plants actually do worse because they're outcompeted. So I think it's a fine approach that was specified here.
Thank you.
Just one thing I would like to add on that point, is in the re- re-vegetation plan, it provides for a plant mitigation period, when we have to monitor the, the vegetation to make sure that it, it succeeds.
Thank you.
And the other thing I wanted to comment on is that we all actually do have experience dealing with environmental justice matters concerning these types of facilities. I've actually worked on permitting, uh, various energy facilities located at landfills in disadvantaged communities, and many of the monitoring measures and the more robust programs we had incorporated from a soils management standpoint, air quality standpoint, dust management, traffic management, all of those are standard features that we've actually implemented in disadvantaged communities in order to not only maintain existing baseline air quality, but improve the condition for the communities. And so I would just wanted to address Councilmember Bistic's comment about that, because we have, um, in the context of addressing environmental justice, it has not only involved addressing the particular demographic in that community, but tribal communities as well, and I have dealt with this with respect to oil facilities, ongoing oil operations, near coastal resources, where there were tribal communities that were not federally recognized tribes. So I just want to say, you know, we're, we're certainly sensitive to these issues, which was why we took the approach we did in this context.
Have you done work in the, those regards with visitor-serving communities?
I'm sorry, with visitor-serving?
Visitor-serving, yes. In terms of environmental justice specifically.
Uh, with visitor-serving communities, yes.
Like this coastal community here?
Yes, I have dealt with it in Mendocino County on the North Coast, um, in other locations in the Central Coast, and then, um, not in coastal resources, but in the Central Valley as well. And in Los Angeles County, uh, where there were coastal resources, South Coast coastal resources, where there was a visitor-serving, uh, component to it, and actually where some of the, um, non-federally recognized tribes were interested in having community-oriented, uh, tradit- ways of recognizing the importance to the traditional practices within a, within a residential mixed-use development area, uh, near Whittier Narrows Dam, where there was additional work being done by the Corps of Engineers.
In Whittier, did you say?
Whittier Narrows Dam, where there was also work with the Corps of Engineers. We, most of us have experience dealing with federal agencies in that regard.
Thank you.
Time check.
I have another question. Um, I, I think, I, I thought I read in the EIR that, that EIR hadn't analyzed impacts to the creek and to the ocean. Um, so, can you just talk to that? And I, I, like, I'm, I'm just, I'm concerned that maybe some of these chemicals are okay, you know, in, in an interior, um, situation, but the impacts to, to waterways might be different. Um, and, and I, I was also told, and again, I don't have documentation, that the, the, um, the state water board, for example, does not allow class three soils to be used at, on levees. And so, if that's not allowed, which is right next to water, you know, is, is, would this actually be allowed? Where, where things could leach through into, um, environmentally sensitive habitat and the ocean?
Sure, so I'm, I'm definitely not a specialist on hazardous materials or leaching, but we are working with the federal and state agencies to get permits for the project. Uh, the creek is out of the formal project area, but these agencies are aware that the work is happening right next to the creek, so we have a provisional per- permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, and have been working with the Water Quality Control Board on a 401 water quality certification, and they're, you know, familiar with what the project is, the material coming in, proximity to the creek, et cetera, and that issue has not come up.
There's just, I'm sorry, there's just one more important distinction I have to make. This is not a class three commercial waste site. None of the testing requirements or limits, uh, can be defined that way. It's residential reuse values, and that's a fancy way of saying that the soil is clean enough to go in your backyard. That's how it's designated. This is not a class three site, it's not a class two site, it's not a class one site, R-CRA, non-R-CRA, none of that, this is residential reuse values.
Okay.
The other thing I would add is that, um, the, I do a lot of permitting work for levees for flood control facilities, and the soils criteria for levees are different than what they would be in this context. That's really driven by levee seepage criteria, Corps of Engineers standards concerning the integrity of the levee for flood control purposes, and of course, people are not going to put, um, contaminated soil on that. That doesn't even rise to that level, because you still have to comply with the Clean Water Act and water quality standards, but the levee criteria are dictated by the Corps of Engineers.
Okay, thank you.
Time check. Do you want to?
Sure, are we done asking questions? Because I'd rather close the public hearing before making the motion, unless there are more questions, in which case I'll be happy to make a motion.
I don't have any further questions.
I'm going to have a lot of more questions as we get into the project and the EIR and so forth, but I don't have any pro- yeah, I think we can close the public.
For the applicant, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now.
We're going to close the public hearing.
We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
So how about that time check?
Time check.
Um, as the person on the dais who must stop drinking water as of midnight, um, that's thinly veiled code for I have a procedure in the morning. Uh, without going into too much detail, I'm happy to, happy, I am willing to make a motion to extend the meeting to 1:00 AM, and that is my motion. I'm not suggesting we stay here till 1:00 AM, I'm suggesting we give ourselves the room to deliberate as we see fit.
I would not support that.
Well, why do you always come to me for the motion, then?
I didn't.
I know. You volunteered. We do.
The mayor looked directly at me and said, "Time check."
Wait, there's a lack of a second, so that motion fails.
I make a motion, we extend to midnight. I'll second that.
Okay, please vote.
The motion to extend to midnight made by Councilmember Bowles and seconded by Councilmember Beer, that vote passes unanimously.
What? A break?
Well, I'd like to hear from our planning commissioners.
Wait.
Yes, I did want to do that as well.
We need a break.
Need a break first.
I've been sitting here too long.
Okay.
Okay.
How long?
Uh, 10 after.
10 minutes.
Is that too long?
Yeah.
Five after.
Recording stopped.
Tell us the reasoning why they denied the project.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Samantha Hauser. Um, I'm with the Planning Commission, I'm one of your two liaisons tonight. Um, we also have Commissioner Greg Wright here, who is your other liaison. So I will try to sum up the thousands of pages of technical documents and the four meetings in the year that Mr. Hulley referred to into just a couple minutes, so that we don't take too long. Um, you know, we heard a lot of concerns, and we've voiced a lot of concerns throughout the process. I think the question that we never really focused on was whether a reclamation was necessary. What we really looked to analyze were, um, did the reclamation as proposed comport with our local policies? That was the first one. And then did we have a certifiable EIR? And I think, um, there are a few different things that informed the decision that got us to the 5-0, kind of unanimous, unanimous denial, um, last month in August. Um, so, first off, from, um, a land use consistency view, um, we were not able to make findings that this proposed project was consistent with the general plan, for a number of reasons, um, but namely, that the findings required that the end uses be known, and those are not going to be known without a specific plan, and that's what we talked about with the applicant. So that was kind of the first one where we couldn't make the findings, and there were a lot of findings that fell into that category. The second thing we were asked was, does this proposal minimize grading? And the answer is no, right? Um, very simply, uh, the applicant team responded that there are proposed three-to-one slopes, which increase the amount of fill that's being proposed. That's just very basic. The, um, kind of second facet of that is that the number, as, as you heard again tonight, right? The number kept changing, and commissioners asked for a discrete number of cubic yards that were, that were being proposed, and we were not given one. And part of the reason we were not given one was because the applicant said that they could further reduce the amount of soil by factoring in foundations. So, can we make a finding that the, um, impacts and the amount of soil are minimized to the maximum extent feasible? No, because the applicant told us no. Um, and then on the CEQA topic, um, you know, we were asked to certify a CEQA report on a project description that kept changing, and I think that, you know, to echo what council said, Rainey did a really good job writing a CEQA report, but it was on a project that was outdated, and, um, we found, you know, for example, the cultural, uh, component of that, we had asked about cultural consultation, and we were told that, you know, in accordance with the law, AB 52 consultation was done, and that our local tribe did not qualify. But there is a general plan policy that says that applicants must work with our local tribes, and that was not completed. Um, we also felt like there was a lot of reliance in the technical memo from August about archaeology that relied on Shippo's assertions, um, but Shippo didn't look at the project after the tribe had suggested that there was a midden here. Their review was from 2022, and specifically had a paragraph that said, if new information comes up, this, uh, analysis needs to be relooked at, and we did not see analysis of that kind. Um, and lastly, it was a little bit confusing that development was both being suggested and not being suggested, and it was hard to look at CEQA holistically, um, with that in mind. So for those reasons, 5-0, we voted not, um, that we were unable to make the findings. Um, and I believe that additionally, Commissioner said it was not the right. said it was not the right project for Pacifica. And with that, I'll ask if Commissioner Wright has anything to add.
I would echo everything that our chair has suggested, but in addition to that, you know, your planning commission, the people you picked, we really worked hard at this. We took our duty and our responsibilities very, very, very seriously. We read thousands of pages. We went above and beyond. We did, we did the research. We went down into the weeds. I know multiple members of us read the entire 96, 98 studies, and we really understood exactly what was going on in the past, all the way through the present. And we just weren't capable of making the findings that we were asked to make, which are very different than the findings that you're being asked to make. So I can't give you any insight into that, but I can tell you what it is that we were able to find. And we were unanimous. We all brought all our experience, skills, and knowledge to bear. We have a diversity. I know how hurt it is sitting up there in those seats doing what you're doing right now. And we just couldn't come to the conclusion to support the project. And I trust in you and I trust in the process that the right decision will be made. Thank you.
Does anyone have questions for our planning commissioners?
I don't. Thank you, though. I appreciate all the time that you all put in.
I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
As a group, first of all, thank you for all the work you all put in. It was clear from the questions asked, let alone the deliberations, how many, in varied angles, y'all were trying to look at this thing, trying to truly do your due diligence for the community. Great deal of hard work and dozens of hours that I got to watch, you know, from not in this room, because it's bad practice as a councilperson to be in the room when a planning commission meeting is going on. So thank you for the work. As a group, as a determining body, were there consensus around specific findings that could not be made?
Yes. So, I mean, I'll kind of reiterate what I initially said, which is that we could not make findings that this was consistent with the general plan. We did all kind of concur that a specific plan process, which was suggested by Mr. Hulley in May, would really help alleviate that. And if a specific plan with the community's input was completed, that we would be more comfortable saying that the reclamation was consistent because the very nature of the findings says you have to understand the end use. We also, I feel like we're very, essentially, there was deliberation in August where a couple of members of the Planning Commission were undecided. But by the end of the evening, we all concurred that we could not make the same findings.
With regard to the specific plan, as you brought it up, was that ever brought forward as a condition of approval or discussed as some kind of condition upon which the project could move forward?
Sure. We very specifically asked Mr. Hulley if we could consider doing a specific plan prior to or in parallel to reviewing the reclamation. And, you know, he made a very thoughtful answer about how, you know, if he could do it again, he probably would try to do it like that, but that life does not have a rehearsal dinner, I think were his exact words. So we understood from him that that was not feasible, but it was requested by the planning commissioners.
Thank you.
We did request it, and it was shortly thereafter, if I'm not mistaken, that that's when they came back with the reduced fill option to try to address part of the many concerns that we had expressed during that meeting.
The reduced fill from?
To 576.
Oh, to 573 or whatever.
From 874.
Okay, got it. That's the timeframe for us. Thank you.
And can you tell me, so you mentioned, you know, the goal of reducing the amount of fill. The three to one slopes, I haven't done that analysis myself on. So the 870,000 cubic yard project or the 530,000, are you still seeing those slopes on both of those places? So?
Yes. At the plan that we reviewed in August, which was for the 583,000 cubic yards, the applicant confirmed when Commissioner Berman asked the question that there were three to one slopes being proposed. They were not existing slopes. They were new slopes.
Okay. And one of the other things, as I've been reading through SMARA and trying to understand, again, what is required, section 3704 has performance standards for grading and slope stability and so forth. And what's interesting, I mean, the whole two to one idea, SMARA talks about in terms of final reclaimed fill slopes. But then there's a whole nother section that talks about cut slopes, which includes the high walls and the quarry faces. And those don't have to be two to one. Those, it says, shall have a minimum slope stability factor, safety, that is suitable for the proposed end use. So my understanding, and I think one of these previous reclamation projects actually didn't bother trying to put soil up against the limestone because it didn't need it. And just reading the geotechnical report, it's page seven, this is appendix, sorry. This is where I started in my review. I have to understand things technically. Appendix J, where it talks about the Franciscan complex. It says it maintains relatively steep, even overhanging slopes, so even more than one to one, right? Owing to rough and calcite cemented discontinuities, the existing approximately one to one horizontal, vertical limestone slopes in the quarry face and southern bluff appear to be performing well, exhibiting superficial ravelling as would be anticipated, but not showing evidence of deep steated instability. So my understanding is we don't need all that soil against the limestone, right? I mean, there's areas above the limestone that needed it, and there are other fill areas that needed it, but.
I mean, Councilmember Bowles, the question that we originally asked in June of 2023 when we first reviewed this was how much soil and imported soil is actually needed to reclaim the quarry? And that number has moved throughout this process. And even tonight was the first time we heard something different than at the last meeting. So I think part of the, what you heard in August at our meeting was a discomfort with not having a discrete number.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, that's absolutely what I keep falling back on, too, because it confuses me. And I can't see the end uses if I don't have a plan. And so that's where I keep going back to. And so I really appreciated being able to watch all of the planning commission meetings and really watch you do all the work that you do for starters. And it really bothered me that in the staff report, it says erroneously stated, er, aired and abused its discretion, misconstrued the project, erroneously claimed. That is not my planning commission. I just want you to know that I trust you all so much, and I really, really appreciate the work that you did, and I learned from you. And so those little statements, throw those words out.
I also want to ask about HPD because that is such an important thing to this community. And obviously, they're asking for a variance. And
Right.
HPD requires us to minimize disturbance, right? Not just development, but disturbance. If I can get staff maybe to pull up a couple of drawings, I wanted to ask some questions. So starting with C00 and then C01.
City Clerk, can you please pull up the PDF labeled October 23, 2023?
Sorry, the file is giving an error on attempting to open that PDF.
It's a big file. Hmm. Can you tell me, what were you asking?
The applicant's drawings have some diagrams about HPD that I believe are inaccurate. And so I want to be able to point specific things out.
Thanks. While we're waiting for the maps to pull up, maybe you can just talk, given the narrative, which, which, you know, will be part of the record as well.
All right. So, well, the first point I wanted to pull up was just sort of their survey, which shows the property lines. And if you look here on the southern flank, you know, the property line goes all the way down to the ocean, right? On C01, which is where, which is where we find some calculations, not the whole calculations, and that's part of what's confusing. This is their lot coverage exhibit. And you'll see they've defined their line of what they're counting as not including this property that they own that is the steep bluff on the southern flank. And there's actually a note here on the side, which I can't read in this tiny text, my glasses on, with an asterisk that says, site area includes easement connecting parcels and west parcel excluding ocean side bluff. Everything I've read in HPD is you have to look at your whole site. So you're not just looking at what you're disturbing. You're looking at your whole site and what the slopes are. And then that gives you your calculation. So I think the calculation of what's allowed is incorrect. I also haven't seen a calculation of what's proposed. I mean, I think it's easy enough to say the whole quarry bowl site is disturbed, but the staff report says 2.8 acres are disturbed on the eastern parcel. And there's no diagram. We've seen this in other projects, color coded diagrams of what has counted. And maybe I've missed it if staff knows where it is otherwise. But there's a, there's a letter from the applicant that says the 2.8 acres is the wetlands and the mitigation pond. But there's a lot of other work going on at the site. They're grading for a new road, right? Grading the quarry road. They're putting things down. They're building culverts. I've seen no drawings of any of that that defines that work. I haven't seen a tree replanting plan. So what HPD says is, you know, if you're not going to count it as a disturbance, you can't touch it. It has to stay in its natural state. So if you're planting trees somewhere, or if you're taking pompous grass out somewhere, I couldn't find any reference to that being happening, that's all disturbance, too. And that hasn't been counted. And so I don't feel comfortable approving a variance that I don't even have the information on. And again, we should be minimizing grading. So this wasn't the drawing I asked for, but.
Not for planning.
City Clerk, can you go to page 13, please?
C01 is where you find those calculations. There. That's C01, right? And you can't read it because it's blurry, but it's at the bottom, right? Where that little asterisk, under lot coverage calculation. And then the coastal commission had an issue with HPD and the rezoning, too. So.
I have questions about that. If we could talk about that rezoning, it was a little bit confusing to me, and I'm not as familiar with the zoning in the general plan. Haven't looked at it as closely. So what was, what it was and what it was proposed to change to with plan development. Could you talk a bit about that, staff or planning commission, whomever?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
For the question. So as I had previously mentioned, the 1980 general plan and the 1980 LCLUP don't have a standard land use for the site. It's called special area, and the uses include commercial, residential, city hall, and marina. That's what is called out in the 1980.
City Hall and marina.
Yes. That's what's called out in the 1980 plans. The current, the land use under the 2040 general plan is visitor-serving, commercial, and conservation. The current zoning for the site is service, commercial, with a public vote required to rezone for residential use, hillside preservation district overlay, and a coastal zone district overlay. The proposed zoning is plan development with a public vote required to rezone for residential use, the hillside preservation district, and the coastal zone overlay. And so as part of the coastal commission approval, they would also need to approve the rezone of the site from the current zoning to the proposed zoning.
And what does plan development include specifically?
In terms of what? I'm sorry.
Well, I understand visitor-serving, commercial. I understand conservation. I understand low intensity, dah dah dah. I don't know what that exactly means, plan development. I just know that term has been used in relationship to Sharp Park specific plan areas as well.
Yes. So it's slightly different. Our zoning ordinance has a lot of, if you want to do this, you need to do this, you need to do this, you need to do this. That's what's occurring here. Because of the hillside preservation district, under that zoning article, it states, if you want to do any sort of development, including grading or excavating, you need to get a development planned. And in order to have a development plan, you also need to have a specific plan. The term specific plan in this sense is not like the traditional Sharp Park specific plan where we have a document that has land uses, it has policies of what's going to be there. This is very much because of the way the code's written. It's essentially just a development plan that is telling us what the use will be, which is reclaiming. And the specific plan is the information of how it's going to be reclaimed for this type of project. It's not like the traditional specific plan, Sharp Park specific plan that we're used to seeing, where there's a document that is labeled specific plan. This is a requirement of our code. And so when we have projects that are in the PD zoning or need to obtain PD zoning because they're in the hillside preservation district, the project materials themselves are the development plan and the specific plan. We see this, there's a lot of examples in the last 10 to 15 years, specifically with single-family residences that have been approved through the city, where they are in the hillside preservation district, or they're in the PD zoning districts on the north side of the city, and they're required to go through the DP, the development plan and the specific plan process in order to develop.
Does that specific plan nomenclature have a modern equivalent that we, our code should be modernizing, too?
I am not sure.
Fair enough.
I have another general plan consistency question. And this is related to ESHA. So COI 28, I think I read some of this earlier, it says alteration of landforms, removal of vegetation, impervious surfaces, noise, light, and glare shall be minimized in areas, oh, I should have read the beginning. In areas, if the area qualifies as ESHA under the California Coastal Act, the following restrictions apply. And then, and then that sentence. So again, it's about minimizing the work in ESHA. And I haven't gotten to the whole EIR to understand, like, but I know in the general plan map, this whole area is mapped as potential ESHA. And then I was given a letter from the coastal commission. This is from 2005. It had to do with a project on Fassler, but it actually referred to the quarry area. And I'll just read the section. So again, this is from the California Coastal Commission, May 23, 2005. ESHA and wetlands, the section of Highway 1 that would be expanded as traffic mitigation for the proposed residential project on Fassler is part of the Pacifica Quarry Site, which contains wetlands, stream, and rip. which contains wetlands, stream, and riparian habitats that host San Francisco garter snake, California red-legged frog, western pond turtle, and other special-status species. The area supports one of the few remaining breeding habitats for the San Francisco garter snake and is thus critical for long-term viability of the endangered species." So again, I don't even know what the impacts to ESHA are. We don't know what all they're doing in the flat part of the land.
So this is something that in the August meeting, the Planning Commission did discuss. So Figure 7.3 of the general plan shows the quarry as potential ESHA, and 6.1 in the previous element shows it as other protected open space. And so part of what was difficult about creating a land use consistency finding with the general plan, where so much of this quarry area is designated conservation in our land use element, is being able to find that this particular reclamation, which does disturb these areas, was consistent with the way we define conservation in our general plan. And that was one of the findings that we were asked to make and specifically were unable to.
Okay. Yeah, I'm having trouble with that, too. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowles, I can also respond from the staff's perspective. So we do have general plan policies that do state prohibited new development in existing wetlands, except as allowed under the Federal Clean Water Act and California Coastal Act. There's also language that refers back to if impacts to wetlands is unavoidable, compensation measures should be included. And so that's what's occurred here. There is an environmental impact report that outlines the impacts to biological resources, including wetlands, and the appropriate mitigation measures for that.
But, yes, it refers to the wetland in the quarry parcel, which is being moved, but it doesn't refer to the wetlands in the main parcel. And again, we don't know what they're doing in the main parcel because we don't have a vegetation plan, right? So there may be impacts here that we don't know anything about.
And I guess I'm wondering about that in terms of the EIR. How would that be corrected, I suppose? Because it sounds like the project amount of dirt kept changing, and so when you have an EIR that's based on a certain amount, and then if it's going to change, how does that happen? Is the EIR amended, or is it redone? That's my question.
City Attorney, I see, reaching for the mic.
We should let the EIR consultant respond to that if they can.
All right. I think I got all that.
I know, sorry. I do that.
I guess I'll start with the wetland question. The entirety of both sites were surveyed by the biologist and identified where the potential, where the wetlands exist on the site, and then identified which ones would be impacted by the proposed project. And as part of the proposal is inclusion of some man-made-built wetlands at a ratio that satisfies the requirement. And then as far as how the project morphed a little bit over time, we looked at, the first project that we looked at was the biggest one. And then as the applicant came back with less fill, we were asked to take a look at that plan and review it against what the EIR said and determine whether there's any changes, if there's any, anything that might trigger recirculation. And so we submitted a memo that looked at that smaller, the 800 cubic, 800,000 cubic yard plan. And basically what the conclusion was that it's the same footprint from a biological standpoint. It's the same footprint, it's just less fill going into that footprint. So they're still impacting the same amount of wetlands with the smaller...
But do you understand my question? We don't know what the impacts are to the others, to the eastern parcel.
Right. The only improvements being done in the eastern parcel are related to the ingress and egress and the mitigation ponds themselves.
Well, the ingress and egress is right next to wetlands. You're creating a culvert over the wetlands. Again, there's no drawings that show what the impact is to that. There's also trees that are super close. There's no drawing that shows the tree canopy and how, it doesn't show any of those trees being moved, being removed, but it doesn't, there's no analysis showing the impacts to the trees, and an arborist report has been analyzed either.
In the biochapter, it goes to...
No, I think...
Keep turning off. There you go.
In the biochapter, there was a discussion on tree removal, and that arborist report that you mentioned identified where the trees were, the protected trees that were slated for removal, and they're all in the quarry parcel.
There are some...
It's noise counseling, so you really have to speak directly into it, because otherwise it doesn't hear you.
It seems to be off again.
It's giving me a...
A red light.
She's the light. The other light.
Yeah.
Is it out of battery? Huh?
Maybe switch seats.
There you go. Sorry.
Another group uses them a lot.
All right. So it identified where the trees are required for removal, but showed where the ingress goes through, there are protected trees along that route, but they're not slated or required for removal. There will be some minor trimming, and there's a mitigation measure actually in the EIR that requires a tree protection plan to make sure that those trees are adequately protected.
Yeah, I don't understand why that's not in the application now. The problem is the, I mean, I was walking there just recently, that the tree canopies are touching, right? And so basically, the roots are touching. So anything you're doing to the road and the weight of the trucks driving on that, you're impacting the trees. And that hasn't been analyzed in the arborist report. But also, there's wetlands all through there, and the wetlands, you know, grow in the wintertime. And so I'm not convinced that we're not impacting those wetlands with this truck movement either. And then back to the tree replanting, my, again, there's no plan, which is frustrating because we don't understand what's being disturbed. But in the general plan, it talks about the quarry area being coastal scrub, which is not an area that has trees, right? It's all low. So the tree replanting, in my opinion, is probably all going to be in the quarry flat parcel, which, again, we haven't shown. Is it impacting the wetlands? Is it more disturbance that we haven't called? We just don't have that information.
So the biologists that went out and did the survey identified where the wetlands are. I can see if I can find that map for you in a second. And that was also peer-reviewed, and we have determined that those impacts have been identified, and there's adequate mitigation to reduce the impact.
But where are the plans that show what you're doing to the road and the culvert? And it's actually increasing the slope and then having, you know, berms on the side. So how do you know what the impacts are to the wetlands without...
You mean like creating wetlands based off of the...
No, creating a road over the wetlands that extend, that possibly extends into the wetlands.
If you give me a minute, I can find the map of where the wetlands are.
I'm looking at the grading plan, C-10. It talks about the slope changes. The culverts are referred to in the application, but I don't actually see details of them anywhere. And I did look at all the drainage details. That's where I've been struggling, because I'm trying to find all the freaking drawings for the project.
So, but I, that comment has been noted.
Okay.
And so if you want to, you know...
We can move on.
Yeah, we can move on, and we can come back to that if you find what you're looking for.
Samantha, can you, you mentioned the general plan required tribal consultation. Can you point me to where that is?
Yes, I actually have the policy noted. Let me find it. So CO-I-70 is an implementing policy which requires applicants to, quote, "work with local Native American tribes to protect recorded and unrecorded cultural and sacred sites."
Oh, recorded and unrecorded. That's interesting. That's very broad.
Correct.
Okay.
You mentioned something about a 2022 study that suggested that if new information comes up, we should be consulting with the tribe.
It's not really a new study, and I would ask Rainey to potentially comment on this, but there was a memo from Rainey and ALTA, who's the archaeological consultant of record for the applicant. And I actually, I don't know if, sorry, let me correct that. I don't know if it's applicant hired or city hired. That being said, that memo relied heavily upon the state's Office of Historic Preservation concurrence, which was done when a cultural, this is very technical, but when a cultural 106 report was done, when the applicant tried to get their Army Corps permit, the state has to opine as to whether or not there are cultural resources. It's part of the checks, the box checks that they have to do to be able to move forward with the biological permits. So as part of obtaining that report, SHPO issued a concurrence letter, which was an exhibit, I think it was Exhibit 3, to this really long archaeological memo that was given to the Planning Commission. If you look at that SHPO letter, it is very clear that if the, and I could pull up the paragraph if you'd like, but it says, "With the information we have, this is our concurrence. If new information comes to light, the applicant," or I can't remember how they define them, "is required to provide additional information and may be required to do more stuff." And I would ask Rainey to correct me on that, because I am not a SEQA consultant.
And that comment was more in relation to EIR, not general plan consistency, correct?
Yeah, and Sam is right. The Section 106 process is a federal requirement and was triggered through consultation related to 404 permitting. But as far as the SEQA document and the requirements in the SEQA document, we based our analysis on multiple reports prepared over time, and the latest went out and surveyed an area greater than the project area and determined through their pedestrian in-person auguring and surveys that there was not any resources on the site. But even so, we do have mitigation measures that identify what you need to do in case you do come across something, because there is, the project isn't an area that is culturally sensitive.
And I'll just add that I found the paragraph, it's on page 61 of 61 of the report, which is signed by Julian Polanco, State Historic Preservation Officer. It says, "Be advised that under certain circumstances, such as an unanticipated discovery or a change in project description," which obviously this underwent, "the COA may have additional future responsibilities for this undertaking under 36 CFR Section 800 at sequential." If you require, and then it just tells you who to contact. So the tribe indicating on the record during public comment that there was a potential mid-in, and then sending a legal letter that stated as much.
Are you referring to the May 17 letter?
Correct. May 17, 2024, which is important because the SHPO letter is again from 2022. And so because this is a fill operation, and it's not about excavation, right? You're not uncovering things. I think the question that I had and that the Planning Commission asked is, has the cultural component of the EIR been done properly, or is this additional information that requires going back through process?
Mm-hmm.
And I will flag these as concerns that may facilitate findings at a later time. Okay. Just want to make sure that's...
We're getting close to midnight.
We should do a time check as well.
Time.
Do not gloat. Do not.
I'm not gloating. I offered space. Now we're doing another time check. This is all I'm saying. Would you like me to do 12:30 rather than 1:00?
Yes.
I move that we extend the meeting to 12:30.
I second.
Please vote.
You know what the next one's going to be?
The motion to extend to 12:30 made by Big Stick and seconded by Mayor Fortembeck Meyer passes unanimously.
I'm going to stop for a second and say something that may be correct and may not, but I don't see this ending in any resolution at all tonight. I know that we want to submit items that we're interested in to planning so that we can get those items settled. So, look, she's giving me a look. Oh, everyone is...
You're saying submitted to planning. I think what I'm suggesting is we're giving information to staff, specifically the city attorney, to bring back findings that may be used for denial at the next meeting if we should continue.
Okay. So what I'm saying is, should we continue? Should we continue till 12:30 and then decide what we're going to continue the meeting?
My suggestion is that the mayor takes sort of a straw poll to see where the council is. And if the council, in fact, is going where Councilmember Big Stick is going, then that would just be, you know, there have been concerns raised already in terms of, you know, general plan consistency issues. There's also, you know, the failure to have, you know, a concrete understanding of what that final grading plan would be for 583. So...
Tree plans, grading plans.
If you could get a consensus of the council, just a straw poll to see where, if the council is supportive of, you know, addressing the appeal issues tonight, or if you feel that it needs to be continued in order to get more information so that you can make a decision? Because those two tracks will, you know, really inform how the council should handle the remainder of the deliberations.
May I ask a clarifying question, Mayor? Because we're looking at two appeals. I must admit, I had some difficulty fully understanding Mr. Stejink's appeal, simply because the project was already denied by the Planning Commission, and so I'm not entirely... It's counterintuitive to me that somebody would appeal something that already went the way they seem to think it should have gone.
Well, and that's why it was staff's recommendation that you deny that appeal.
Are we prepared tonight to make findings of denial for that appeal?
Well, I have, I don't know, because I don't know what a majority of the council wants to do. So I really suggest that the council do a straw poll.
Okay. So I'll...
And then I can help direct you on what the next steps would be, depending on how the poll comes out.
I will ask council what they would, that first appeal, the Dan Stejink appeal, would you like...
No, I would say, just a consensus on how the, the appeals are sort of unrelated to the de novo review of the project. So council really, there are actions on the appeal, and there are also actions on whether or not the council, what the council wants to do with this de novo review of the project, which you also have to review. My suggestion is, if you can give staff an indication of where a majority of the council want to go with the project, we can deal with the appeals after that. I'm just asking for a straw consensus, a straw poll that will give me a consensus on where the council is going with the project, because then I can help direct you on the next steps of deliberation.
Well, let's start.
I mean, I can just tell you, I mean, just, I still have 10 more pages of questions. Like, if we're really reviewing this to prove it, I've got lots of questions on SEQA and other things, too. But I think, I think I've already raised, you know, just in the short time, you know, there's more grading here than we need and fill and... there's more grading here than we need and fill and the HPD is incorrect. So, I mean, for me, I'm okay having findings of denial. I can't, I can't see a way to approve the project as it stands now.
Me too.
I'm with you.
Yeah.
And I agree.
So if that's the case, then, then I have, we've already heard, you know, bases. What the plan would be is that the council would direct, make a motion to direct staff to come back with a resolution denying the project. We then would then need from you, what would be the basis for denial? I've already heard some, but we would just want to confirm all those. And then we would come back at a future meeting, maybe in two weeks, may not be in two weeks, but most likely in two weeks. If, if we can pull together all the findings that we need to make for a resolution of denial, we can bring that back at a future meeting where the council would then review this, most likely on consent because the actual motion regarding the project will be taken tonight. It's just that the formal resolution documenting your action tonight will be brought back at a later date. So at this point, what we need to hear from the council is why it is you want to, what is it about this project that makes you not want to approve it and in fact, make a motion to deny? So I've heard, you know, issues with the general plan consistency. I've heard issues with the HPD calculations. I've heard issues related to slope calculations. If there are other issues that you would want to base the findings for denial on, you can mention them, but, but we do have, you know, several that were already.
So the fact that we don't have all the information that we would need to go forward? Like maps and trees and.
And, and what I, what I hear from that is that, and, and I think, you know, council member Bowles brought it up as well. What, council member, and I'll.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm putting words in your mouth, but just what I heard is that there was a plan that in fact, we don't have. So we do, we have a 583 reduced fill alternative that at least one council member feels could probably be even less than 583, given, you know, requirements of even being consistent with SMARA. So that, that is what I hear, that you're concurring with that denial. Yes.
Anybody else?
Yes, yeah, because we can't, the, the end uses aren't known because we don't have a plan. That's, that's where I come.
And I have a question from a former planning commissioner, Rich Campbell. Something he said that I wanted to follow up on around something in our municipal code that requires a reclamation plan is submitted with a grading plan and it sounded as though that was incomplete. A grading plan was not there. So I have concern about the completeness of the application per our codes.
He also said something about traffic plan under the circulation element, which I didn't quite follow, but I'm wondering if he did.
Oh, I, I followed that.
Oh, go ahead.
I have something else on that.
Well, he, the, the, the EIR only analyzes BMT, which is normal under EIRs and SEQA process. But the general plan actually allows analysis of level of service. And we already know that section is an F, right? So, so that's, that hasn't been analyzed to really understand the impacts. But, and then the thing he referred to is, I think it was 9-205, which includes a final grading plan.
Do you have enough information?
Oh, did you not have something more to say on that?
Another question, Sue.
No.
Yes, I did.
Yes.
In regard to this very point, but I didn't want to step on council member Big Stick's point.
No, no, that was it. That was, I, I.
Thank you.
Got a fraction of it and on it filled.
Good enough. There was a recommendation to look at the circulation element of the general plan and, and not just what is required in the EIR. And since I'm not fully clear, I believe you. But I also wanted to know if in that analysis, the health and safety considerations that were brought forward were included in the EIR? The truck, truck trips, the amount of diesel, you know.
Air quality.
Air quality impacts, et cetera.
Right, yes. In the air quality and GHG section, there is an entire modeling effort that was put forward for toxic air contaminants, including diesel particulate matter from exhaust from the vehicles, from, from the hauling trucks. And specifically looked at idling emissions at the intersection, their whole ingress and egress path, idling in the, in the quarry, as well as all of the equipment operating in the quarry. And then that's put through a dispersion model and it identifies concentration at the nearest sensitive receptors, which included the school that we looked at. And so we did the full analysis and it's under the significance thresholds.
And does that include the, as you're coming into town, the slope and the, the grade of Highway 1 in terms of the safety concerns that were raised with brakes and, and driving in a low gear? And how we don't, we're not like a highway that has a runoff thing if you lose your brakes?
From the emissions standpoint, we did use speed bins. And what that does is just give you the emissions associated with acceleration and deceleration that, that are a result of downshifting and that kind of thing.
So it's emissions focused?
It's emissions focused. The losing control is starting to get a little outside of the SEQA realm.
And does that, where does that fit in? Help me, staff and planning commission. Does it, something in the, if it's not the EIR, would it be a condition? Would it, of approval? Would it be, I don't even know what it would be. It's a safety concern. I mean, we have that in the general plan, I suppose.
Yes, thank you. I think there would be two possible ways. One would be through Public Works, our roadway design. There's different types of vehicles that use coast highway, not just hauling trucks for this project. But we also have pluses. We have other trucks for construction. Or there could be something specifically on the site related to the, to this project or a condition of approval for the management and for the driving of the trucks as well.
And then the other point that was made about ingress and egress and safety considerations with traffic for our first responders. That was a concern I had in terms of the additional, but I don't know where it fits in terms of findings or concerns or questions. I just wanted to get that question out there.
Which relates to staging and how do they stage the trucks when they're coming in? Because that could be an issue too, if trucks are backing up on the highway, like you said, and the first responders can't get through because there's trucks on the highway.
Yeah, as, as part of the analysis, there was a queuing analysis done to ensure that there was adequate deceleration space and room for the trucks to get over and get into the site. Given the distance of the ingress and egress paths, there's adequate space to hold quite a few trucks. And there was a analysis that was done based off of the signal timing on the egress to make sure that there's, if, there's a flag person there to make sure that there's safe movement of the trucks at, in the, in the parking lot. And so there was a, an analysis done for how many trucks can be moved during peak hour times and, and how much stacking length is there within the project? And there's, there's ample room on the site for them to back up and still move through as the, as the signal timings allows.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have two more questions. The, the traffic, so there was a, an expert hired by the attorney Grissette, Jeffrey Horneck, who's a, a traffic expert too, who commented on the inadequacies of the traffic in the EIR. And I've seen a response from the applicant, but I haven't seen a response from staff. Is that something that you've analyzed? So he was trying to, I guess, I guess the way the EIR analyzes the trucks is that the truck trips are happening in the Bay Area somewhere and we don't really have to count them, but he was saying that that's not really.
Yeah, and I mean, so from, from the, from the start, we had an, an expert do the, the traffic analysis, which was peer reviewed. And this project is slightly different than a normal project. That's like a commercial development. There, there's truck trips or there's vehicle trips associated with that trip generation. This project is slightly different in that there's soil, there's demand for soil as projects are, are, are under construction in the region. And that generates a demand for where that soil needs to go somewhere. So there's an existing demand and by putting this here as an additional receptacle, the analysis methodology was, okay, what's the, what's the VMT without this project? What's the VMT with this project? Truck trips only? And, and how do they compare? What's the net difference? And so that's how this project analysis was done. Separate from employee trips. That's.
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with that, but anyway, I don't think we're getting into the EIR necessarily tonight. And then Stephanie, if you, if you, I still like to hear about that letter. Yeah.
Yes, I can provide a brief number.
The letter from 2013?
Yeah.
I mean, the Christian Murdoch letter? Yeah.
So it's not a Christian Murdoch letter. This is a State Mining and Geology Board Executive Officers' Report dated June 13 of 2013. And it appears that the City of Pacifica, the quarry, was an item that the State Mining and Geology Board took to one of their hearings. And so this is agenda item number four, Review of Lead Agency Response to the State Mining and Geology Board's issuance of a 45-day notice of correct, to correct deficiencies to the City of Pacifica pursuant to the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act SMARA. Following review, the board may take appropriate action in accordance with the Public Research Code, Section 2774.4A. And so what it appears that occurred is during the time period from 2010 to 2012, the city was not compliant with SMARA. And the board found four deficiencies related to, specifically to the financial assurances that are required for reclamation projects. And this is essentially a, an item that the board heard where they determined that the city in June of 2013 had sufficiently met, partially met or had complied or had fixed all the deficiencies. The part of the email that was, or the part that was quoted in the email refers, it's a section in the background of this item. It's like an agenda item. And the last sentence of the first paragraph of the background says, "Although deemed stabled with no identified, identified public health and safety issues, the site remains unclaimed in accordance with its approved reclamation plan." So that is the, the complete sentence.
Okay, so it hasn't officially been reclaimed, but we don't see any public health and safety issues here. Right? So.
Yes, that's the summary of.
Maybe the reclamation doesn't need to be very much.
I'm sorry, I did not hear that.
So maybe the reclamation doesn't need to be very much if they don't see safety issues. I mean, we don't know. Right?
That's the point is we don't know. Are we supposed to make a motion to give the direction or are you just taking down direction?
No, I had to make one. No, we, we would need a motion to deny the appeals and to direct staff to bring back a resolution denying the appeals and denying the project with appropriate findings as set forth tonight. Can I say so moved? Question.
So moved, is there a second?
Yes, second.
I do have a statement to make before we vote. And also, were there any other findings that anyone was able to make before we go ahead with the motion?
So just, we just, before you take the final vote, I would like.
And I do have a statement to make.
I would like the Assistant City Attorney to, to reflect what, what we have heard in terms of what those findings may be.
So what we have heard is generally inconsistency with the general plan, including requirements to minimize disturbance, ESHA requirements, conservation policies and policies regarding working with tribes. In addition, concerns about minimizing fill based on slope requirements as well as general concerns about whether the, whether the plan really minimizes fill and disturbance. In addition, concerns about clarity about the end uses, given the changing plans and concerns about the lack of information on the plans and ability to make the findings given the lack of information. And lastly. Yeah, lack of compliance with HPD and the zoning requirements in our municipal code.
If there's anything else, please state it now.
You have comments before we vote?
I do, I do. And city attorney, did you say this would be back on consent?
Yes.
Okay.
What the council is doing tonight is you are actually making the motion to deny. It's just that it's not documented and you are asking us to document that those denials and those findings in a formal resolution, which we will bring back to the council on consent at hopefully the next regular council meeting, assuming that can all get prepared in time.
Thank you. And I, I wanted to make sure because if there was going to be a continuance, then certainly my comments could be made at a later date, but I'll make them now.
And I just want to clarify as well that because we do not have the resolution, this, this is not final action on this application. The final action will take place when the resolution is.
Understood.
Assistant City Attorney, I just want to make sure you had the part about the lack of a grading plan, that the reclamation plan was submitted, but it didn't have a grading plan per Pacifica Municipal Code 9-205.
And the tree plan? Tree?
Oh, the tree, that's, Mary brought that up. Oh, we got that. Okay, good.
Thank you.
So the reason I got into this business of being a councilperson is because that process I've witnessed over the course of half a dozen planning commission meetings is what I least like to see my community have to go through. When I talked to the Division of Mining Reclamation and they reiterated, it seemed in no uncertain terms, "The 1998 plan is baked, go forth and be well." I, I heard the consultant tonight when they said, "Well, in our opinion, the Coastal Commission's not going to go for it." And I thought to myself, "Well, I don't know how the Coastal Commission's going to go for upwards of a million cubic yards of fill being brought in." And that's before you get to the environmental justice component. You brought up that vision of a marina in yield general plan. And that actually reminded me of when I was running four years ago knocking on doors and I was standing on Everglades. And that was the vision of one of the people I was talking to. I think it would be charming to have a marina in the quarry site. And I thought, "What a charming pipe dream."
Sea level rise, you never know.
You know? But I, I've heard other charming pipe dreams and, you know, our mayor is fond of the desire to have biotech in that area. And specifically, I think, with making.
Non-polluting biotech.
Non-polluting biotech so we could have a cash flow and.
So I, I just want to remind the council that you have a motion on the floor.
Oh, we didn't vote.
So, so all communication needs to be about the motion.
Oh.
And no questions of staff, but just, you know.
I'm not asking any questions. I'm making a statement.
But do we want to vote on the motion and then you make your statement?
I think I need to make the statement before we make the motion because once we make the motion, or once we vote, it's over.
Okay.
And I had my own vision about that quarry. And in my vision, which is a different vision than the ones I just enumerated. And in my vision, which is a different vision than the ones I just enumerated, I don't know if you all know what Meow Wolf is? Look it up. It's this funky arts collective that have these pop-up installations around the country. And I envision a Meow Wolf in the quarry with a hotel. Maybe there's a hostel component for low-income visitors serving, along with a high-end, the old First Meow Wolf Hotel, and then maybe some housing development, because I do think it should be developed, and I do think it should be developed with housing. That would go to a vote of the people if such a thing was a thing, and mixed income housing, so that, you know, some of our youth in this town might actually be able to afford to live in the place they were raised. But the point is that I've heard several different visions of what could be there. And that's what a specific planning process is about. That's the idea. A process is engaged whereby all of the community members go forth and give the vision. And then maybe it's voted on and approved, or, you know, what have you. But when I heard the 1998 plan was approved, I thought to myself, "Well, you have a plan in your hand. I'm not convinced that what you've been telling me has any more sway over Coastal Commission than the plan that's already approved." It seems like we're talking about disruption of the site and mitigating the disruption of the site to the point feasible, but we're disrupting our community on a constant basis between then and now, and toxicity of soil. But how about the toxicity of the environment our community gets to engage in as we're quibbling over what brings us to findings for denial when there's already a baked plan? And all I wanted to say is, I think that if at any point a specific planning process had been engaged in, we'd be on a very different footing. I think that if that process is engaged in, we might actually have a sense of what the community might actually rally behind. And maybe they wouldn't. But we don't know that until we have that. And frankly, I don't think we can figure out what the right option for fill is that we could agree on as a community without knowing what that specific planning process would say. And so my answer to that is, well, according to the Division of Mining Reclamation, there's already a plan in place that they think passes muster. I don't know what Coastal is going to say one way or the other, but I think that specific planning process, if it were in our hand by now, we'd all be having a much better time in life. I'm ready to vote.
I just... One second. I really want to acknowledge the aspect of a community-based, specific planning process that creates a vision. One thing I want to thank the applicant about is bringing the community together, because I literally got one letter that said, "It's fine, do it." One. So there were comments made, sort of tongue-in-cheek, but it's actually true. And I think that we've... Our own town and my questions about work done with the Coastal Commission, I certainly see the evolution in their thinking around incorporation of tribal consultation and incorporating concerns into those kinds of planning processes. And so that, for me, was a big part, and I wanted to make sure that staff had that. And thank you, thank you very much for enumerating that.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, too, is thank you so much to staff, because this is in no way a reflection of all the hard work you've done. And just know that, that we see it and we really appreciate it. You know, I've lived in this community my entire life, and this topic has come up, I don't even know how many times. And even when I was trying to not pay attention to what was going on in the city, you couldn't. I couldn't not pay attention, because people just... They were just so spirited and like, it was in my face whether I wanted to talk about it or not. And so that's just... That's Pacifica. I think Pacifica's an anomaly, and we have very spirited folks here. And yeah, visioning is really, really important. So thank you for everything.
I'm not going to talk long. I just... I agree, visioning, having a specific plan. For me, part of that plan includes an Aloney-Ramatis cultural center. I went to visit the Native American Museum in Washington, DC with, like, teaching gardens and a restaurant with native foods. Like, this really could be something that draws people here and something that we could be proud of. And Paul, we really do want to work on the specific plan. I want to partner with you to do that. So let's think about what's next and what could be.
And I had a vision, too, a long time ago, and it was voted by the people, and it lost by 509 votes. I found the true amount just yesterday, 509 votes. So it was close. I can't remember the year. I thought I did, but I can't remember. But that's what I have a vision of.
What was that, 2008, maybe?
2008. That's what I had in my head. Anyway, anyway.
The 538, in theory, would have facilitated a specific plan, but I must say, I think that if we had initiated a specific plan under those auspices, it would have been dubious in our community.
Yeah, it'd be done. Okay, please vote.
Oh, wait, did I do the wrong bit?
You did not.
Do that again.
That's a erase.
Okay, I'm resetting the votes.
Wait, what? Remind me.
We're voting to deny.
Yes, to deny.
So yes, to deny.
I thought I was voting no to approve.
I mean, you vote how you want.
And that vote passes unanimously.
Thank you, planning.
You know what?
Thank you.
You can clap.
[applause]
I have a few questions.
Sure.
Of whom?
You adjourned the meeting, right?
Did you adjourn... Oh, wait, did we adjourn the meeting?
I'm adjourned. The meeting is adjourned.
Yes, now you can.